Call.
Honorable Almar Bigay. Honorable Key Allen Bigay, Jr. Honorable Paul Bigay. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton is present from Chicago, New Mexico.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton answered roll call. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Speaker Seth Damon.
President.
Honorable Speaker Seth Damon is present. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Daniel, President.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. answered roll call. Honorable Purnell Halona.
Honorable is present, thank you.
Honorable Purnell Halona answered roll call. Honorable Jamie Hino. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Carl Slater.
Delegate Slater present.
Honorable Carl Slater answered roll call. Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr.
Present.
Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr. answered roll call. Honorable Wilson Stewart, Jr. Honorable Otto Seo. Honorable Charlene Seo.
Present.
Honorable Charlene Seo answered roll call. Honorable Daniel Seo. Honorable Daniel Seo. Honorable Eugene Seo. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Edison Winika. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Honorable Alma Bigay. Honorable Key Allen Bigay, Jr. Honorable Paul Bigay. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Delegate Paul Bigay is present.
Honorable Paul Bigay answered roll call. Honorable Jamie Hino. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate James is present.
Honorable Vince James answered roll call. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Wilson Stewart, Jr.
Present.
Honorable Wilson Stewart, Jr. answered roll call. Honorable Otto Seo.
I'm here, thank you.
Honorable Otto Seo answered roll call. Honorable Daniel Seo.
I'm here.
Honorable Daniel Seo answered roll call. Honorable Eugene Seo. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Edison Winika. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Speaker, you have 12 members present, including yourself.
Okay, we have 12 members present. We need a forum to hear, to continue on reports. So with that colleagues. Who was next, Jimmy Yellow Hair? No, 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 back to man controller. Man Controller.
Speaker, this is Controller.
Yes.
Okay. I do, here have the Yana Nite Speaker and members of the 24 Navajo Nation Council. I don't could, um, die those kids. So the first one was Vice Chair Slater with the particular question on the PAE, on the NDOH contract. And I believe there's approximately 9 million that is still in the, um, about 9.3 million still in open commitments. And so we, there's a few issues at this point in time. There's the issue of our deadline of today and then also issues of the receiving report and the invoice, namely the invoice that we received. We do have a recommendation to get that fixed on the invoice as well as, along with that, I think there's some other contractual issues that will need to be addressed, which I think are more procedural. So although we received the invoice and the receiving report last week on the 24th, so it should be timely and then working through procedurally the, uh, the, the, the contract modification, we think we can resolve that. We discussed this with Mel from DOJ and given, as I mentioned, the date on the receiving report, our recommendation was to modify the invoice. We believe that given all that, we're still within the compliance of the law to get that done. So that's what we think. So in terms of that particular situation with the wraparound service contract, the isolation contract. So it is, um, so I don't see, uh, delegate Herman Daniels. I believe the question was in terms of the, the cost of compliance and also the cost of administering the hardship program. Even I think kids to clear the, um, to the into auto. The other ones was really, as I mentioned earlier, about the elderly's, uh, um, eh, yeah, uh, the, um, at the local level, the, um, in terms of trying to capture all their information for the hardship program. It gave in I think kid, uh, charge. So regarding the cost of compliance, obviously, uh, I call upon the Hushness that 714 million is a lot of money that has gone through the nation's processes. Whether it's the procurement process or the financial payment processes and the administrative process of, uh, of, uh, including the 164, you know, processes. On in that, um, it does take a lot. I believe if you have to put some context to it, um, I know the nation processes about half of the 714 in a given year in terms of federal, federal funds. So now I'm not sure gee, eh, yeah, um, I like go eh, yeah, body change in the base on the heat and coolly agi. So I do, um, it, it really, uh, ask on that the, 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 I had the clear October door, stand, I should not eh, eh, yeah, um, the base of gee, um, hmm, hmm, da iliyah gee, though she don't eat the gee, eh, on thing that been a nice, I don't come home or just so, uh, you eh, yeah, not a nice guy, oh, eh, ni ka na cha ha gee, could ocean that nice gee, eh, yeah, um, I have a CPA firm, a few of them. There's three of them, uh, one that we have, we utilize a lot with their resources. They're number 10 in the nation as far as CPA firm, they have a lot of resources. Although I ban Hushness, at one point in time, we had about approximately 400 people dedicated to the hardship program because this is the largest hardship assistance program in the nation that we're trying to accomplish. So we also have a Navajo CPA firm. They are also assisting us, they have been for a number of years. And they've had to also assist the nation as well regarding the car, the cares. They've assisted in the small business program, they've assisted in the hardship, they are assisting in the, uh, the vital records census, uh, just, uh, so ni ka na cha, uh, uh, now they who go gee. Although we do have our external auditor, um, eh, still, eh, shadow eh, yeah, they've already begun auditing the CARES Act for fiscal year 2020. Um, eh, so upon Hushness. So those are all the expenses that cannot be avoided. If, if we are unable to pay the cost of administrating and compliance, then we wouldn't be able to do what we are doing right now and have been doing for a few months. So eh, shall, um, I do, um, the hit and dodge and a sto, uh, did the base of, uh, been a nice gee, eh, de eh, yeah, been yeah, she, um, Joe, uh, co eh, yeah, but ah, no, no, uh, do, uh, do, no, cut the eh, yeah, let's, so eh, bit, uh, eh, yeah, come on, let me come and dodge ya. So to date, um, I think your question was the clear lot, um, uh, just, uh, base of to the scene, she, eh, been I didn't keep so across the three CPA firms, we've expended a little over 4 million, but that's not including, um, the invoices for December. So, and then just wanted to note that in the month of December, obviously that's after the application period has ended for the hardship. So a lot of work this month. Again, you know, we've had up to at times 400 people dedicated to working on the hardship. So it's a lot of effort, something that people don't realize it because everybody seems to be behind the scenes working hard on. So eh, they, yeah, could ask so. Although in terms of, um, um, our elderly's and people, you know, a con, uh, the his angle, to the eh, yeah, um, uh, phones, the, 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 the internet, the, 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 so eh, eh, yeah, been yeah, how to, 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 eh, not so, um, night, not a gee, application, eh, all bahas on daily, yeah. So I do, um, we had to get all of that information into a repository so that these things can be audit. So I do criteria, they clinic, it's the, um, you have to be enrolled, although you have to establish the financial hardship, those two items. Eh, yeah, so eh, yeah, we have to work on that as well. So obviously, um, the other thing, the, 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 eh, yeah, oh, la, hashin, hot, at the, the, the case, that's the, so in terms of our census data data, eh, I, you see, um, it was not up to par, um, the question, nah, hash action, um, 10 years, 20 years, though she bond, they tingle, um, I do, oh, not so, she, I do, oh, be, be, they, 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 she, I do, database, they clinic, in the, she eh, yeah, the, the, I see, I see, um, line, be, she, uh, data, um, in our databases, records, the, the, the , uh, uh, she not be, they, they, she, gee, not so, been, the, the, she, eh, she, I do, uh, the, I, in dodge and a sh, uh, coho, um, at this point in time, the, 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 I do, she, but plan, the, the, yeah, the, um, who knew that at some point in time we'd be receiving money of this type to do what we need to do? So eh, she eh, yeah, we, you caught, had a, he's, no, she, um, had a, she, um, hardship that need to. So eh, I see, um, I'm like, not a nice, it's the, um, getting all the documents, um, verification, they clinic, eh, so we've been asking a lot of our people to submit copies of their CIBs, um, Joe, eh, the gee, verify, verification, they clinic, eh, yeah, um, we have to get that done so that we're ready. And it's in a database and we have the applications in our portal and so forth. It's a huge undertaking, so, um, eh, been a, eh, yeah, so we have to do some of these things, I do, on a, the logic, yeah, there are, uh, our, uh, vulnerable population, our elderly's and so forth, eh, on the, um, some of them don't have the internet and so forth, so we're trying to work through some of those, those things. So with that extension, con, uh, a, a, yeah, gee, it does help us. And, and we do keep track of the information, and, what in the, on that report, is lying down. We have it all broken up, um, the, the, um, uh, these different classes of what kind of exceptions there are, eh, been a, eh, yeah. If we're able to reserve some of the dollars while we're still working these, through these, uh, exceptions, they clinic, eh, then we, we are able to do that. And we are able to do that with technology as well, eh, uh, uh, shadow, ni ka na, so we're keeping track. So as you can imagine, 290,000 applications is a lot of records to keep track of, uh, though. So we're doing the best we can. Uh, I think, uh, our census data was off, um, the, the, um, we have paper records, we have rolls, we have various offices, not just here in Winderock, uh, vital statistics and census, um, things that we probably as a nation have neglected to maintain, especially in a database format. We're able to do that in weeks' time, probably, I would say, a six-month or more project. We're trying to cram into, you know, in, into a few weeks. And we have the resources so far that we're working on, working with. And so I do, ni hit and na, she, in that is, no, gee, I show, shadow, eh, yeah, uh, Joe, but things, and, and so I do, they're sending us their, their copies of their CIB, they're motivated, um, not only to get, um, the hardship payment, but also to submit their information and so forth. So eh, been a, eh, yeah, I view it as money well spent to update our census data, I do, not so, she, yeah, been a, she, the nation can, uh, you know, whenever it needs to use its census data, um, we're able to obtain, you know, additional funding if we didn't go through this exercise. So it'll hold up on test case, he's done. So we're trying to do our best in terms of reaching out to those populations. We do have Navajo speakers who can assist, um, I do, she, shadow, she, it's the, I do, ni hit and na, she, if you have, um, elderly population, the cotton, that, just, you know, that's the only way to accomplish this goal, it's the, shadow, oh, they not, contact, it's the, I do, um, she, yeah, uh, delegate, uh, Elmer Bigay, I'm not sure what the question were, but I think you were talking about, um, what's best for the people, um, projects. I, I will say, and I've maintained throughout this, uh, CARES funds, um, uh, way back when, you know, it was, uh, more assistance, kind of a disaster relief assistance type payment in the beginning. So you'll see some of the state and local tribal government, some of them, uh, they do have their various assistance program, they have their rental assistance, they have utility assistance, eh, hotel, they put on those programs. And so, um, similarly, uh, some of the other tribes have done hardship assistance, financial assistance, um, uh, program. So I think, uh, we, we do, we did, we were one of the few governmental entities that have done infrastructure projects. And again, um, we, I believe, given our enterprise and our programs and departments, they've done a good job getting a lot of those things done in the short timeframe that we have. So I do, sometimes, uh, some of those projects, you know, they benefit certain people, I do, as opposed to, you know, a big, uh, program like the hardship or even the small business. So it's just, uh, the monies were really meant to be spent, spent right away to, to meet, uh, the impact of COVID-19, even if that means, um, you know, just this, uh, contract that I was talking about earlier, um, it's for testing, wraparound services, isolations, those types, you know, they, they, that don't need to, um, it, how the, they, she, been yeah, eh, yeah, come base on the, the, on that, uh, so, um, so it's really tough, uh, 'cause sometimes people say, well, infrastructure is badly needed. So, uh, I don't know if in the new administration that there will be additional funding. I mean, things are yet to be seen, but, um, I believe the new administration might be more into giving additional funding, uh, through the pandemic, et cetera. So of course, you know, we, we can't say it's, it's for sure, but it's on the horizon, something to also be thinking about as well. So eh, they, yeah, could ask, so, uh, I, um, I, those are my responses, I do, here have.
Thank you, Controller. Got any other comments, questions, Mr. Rotis or Ms. Barbra?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Speaker, this is, uh, this is Ms. Barbra, I don't have anything to add to what the Controller said.
Okay, thank you.
Delegate Paul Bigay.
Hey, thank you. Honorable Paul Bigay, I can put you in the queue. Honorable Yellow Hair.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let me speak right now, yeah, thank you very much, uh, Speaker of the Navajo Nation, for the 24th Navajo Nation Council, yeah, I appreciate that. There you are. The press, but not any gee, particularly, uh, care, eh, money, don't hardship money, it's copy, nilge, base of. And where, and where, what they, she, they, on the way, based on eh, for media release from the Controller, on the way, how, the, the, oh, is, uh, even, that's eh, yeah, ah, ah, yeah, huh, not the staff from the office of the Controller, calling center, no, yeah, not the, uh, cock, uh, la, cause they not, eh, she, referring to OOC staff, officer Controller staff, eh, and the, miss, as a part, center, no, huh, not the, 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 she talks about OOC, SMIS, the part within the OOC.
Honorable Yellow Hair. Lost you. Honorable Yellow Hair, you cut out? Honorable Yellow Hair. Honorable Yellow Hair. Going twice. Honorable Yellow Hair going three times. That, moving on down, Honorable Winika. Honorable Winika. By the first star, six.
On, uh, on, uh, on staff now, because I don't know if it can, give it a start, yeah.
Honorable Winika. Going twice.
Speaker, speaker, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Speaker. I appreciate the presenter, uh, Controller and, uh, our Chief Legislative Council and, the presenter is from Department of Justice. Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned about the, this CARES Act money and also the hardship. My position, eh, I, I, I feel like we just need to leave that hardship alone. I, 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 1500, I'm a, the, 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 I do, it's, you need 700, but I, we, we, the, 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 I didn't, not, eh, need, she, the, 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 a lot of the chapter official, because they were there to help with the applications as far as people coming in. And, uh, they told them, uh, what the, what the process was for and applying for this hardship. So right now, our, our chapter officials are going really get it if they don't get a, a certain amount. I think the amount that was, uh, given to us by the Controller, I think she said, 2,247 for adults and 417 for children, at least it's getting there. If we just let, um, the money, if we would let it keep going into hardship, maybe we'll be able to get the 1,500 for adults and 700 for children. Because, uh, for, as far as the beginning of the CARES Act funds, a lot of our people have just been disappointed. Sure, they got, um, the PPEs and, uh, food and, uh, water and this and that, they were able to, to get some, but there's a lot that they weren't able to get, especially the 90 million that went to the chapters. I think over half of that just went, went back into hardship. So I think we just have to wait. The only portion that I feel that we might address is what, uh, our Chief Legislative Council told us, if there's any amount that's above what is needed for the hardship, then we can address it. But for now, I think it's best we just leave it alone. It's a, when did, oh, what, eh, it's, yeah, she, huh, no, no, the, 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 the reason why we got into situations because Uh, the reason why we got into situations because of the timeline. If it wasn't for the timeline, there's no question, a lot of those projects would still be going and a lot of it will be, probably would have been completed too. So even in, uh, uh, to banan, ho, shka, es, a hun, to, kot, eh, hun di, uh, uh, at least our people will be able to, uh, benefit from this. Let them spend it as far as what their needs are. And this will be majority of our people will be able to at least get something. So that's my position on this, uh, hardship money and, uh, CARES Act funds. Ako, thank you, Speaker. I reserve my time.
Thank you, Honorable Winika. Serve your time at one minute thirty-six seconds. Moving on down. Honorable Paul Begay.
Uh, thank you, Speaker. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Good afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Speaker Stask, colleagues, and all those that are on the air. Uh, this beautiful, it is snowing here in Page. Uh, that doesn't, uh, happen quite often. Uh, appreciate, uh, the blessing. Uh, my question today is, we know that, uh, the consultant, banker, uh, uh, Tilly. Um, I don't know how much information, uh, are Navajo peoples' vital statistic information that was passed on to them. Uh, those that were requesting census numbers, certain, uh, identification numbers, I guess. Um, how do we know for sure, uh, and that we are rested assured that, uh, these, uh, vital statistic information are secure? Um, because in this day and age, there are ways that numbers, census numbers and things like that, social security numbers, driver's license numbers, they can float around out there. Was there a plan, uh, on how these information will be secured so that none of, uh, these information of our Navajo, uh, Navajo tribal members are not, uh, do not float out there into the public? Uh, eh, eh, been, eh, dish, kit, because, uh, there, there are concerns about that. Uh, uh, what were the measures, uh, were put in place? If there's measures that were put in place to make sure that, uh, these vital statistic numbers are secure? Uh, lastly, uh, I do appreciate, uh, uh, my colleagues, uh, requesting that the hardship numbers be, uh, the hardship funding be left alone. And I do feel the same. To, hayid, oh, chapter, bha, da, si, ne, oh, da, shni, ah, nah, hal, ne. So all the work that was done by the chapter officials at the local level, where they, they know the needs of our people. These requests went, uh, were, they, they never got these requests. Uh, there were timeline, uh, uh, they, you didn't meet the timeline. You didn't, uh, submit this paper. Uh, there is a missing document here and there. Those are all the stuff that prevented them from, uh, getting their, them funded. Ako, eh, with that in mind, oh, hayid, oh, oh, uh, uh, kod, oh, lech, ne, ne. And then some of them had spent their own money thinking that they will be reimbursed from the CARES funding. And now they're in a situation where, where do we get the money to replace what we used? Oh, eh, go, na, has, ah, go, eh. Ako, uh, uh, that's, that's why I'm hoping that this CARES money is left alone. If we, eh, nada, di, chico, uh, uh, na, ho, da, bet, ah, na, da, hayid, zo, ko. Oh, ko, nada, di, ni, na, oh, nada, de, ni, ta. Uh, does that reflect very well on us? Koda, beso, na, so, ki, do, koda, uh, uh, da, al, so, koda, ban, al, de, gi, beso, ah, na, de, ke, hat, ah, go, eh. Koda, nde, ka, gi, koda, ni, eh, na, ne. Uh, uh, we offer our explanations. Some of them understand the processes after explanations, but ako, eh, go, di, be, 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 di, koi, go, eh, ko. Uh, she, eh, hotel, uh, a, case, eh, ni, do, lech, we should leave the hardship funding, uh, alone. The, ne, eh, be, ka, eh, di, do, eh. Auto, bet, sa, uh, bet, sa, ha, da, hayid, ne, eh. Ako, kon, fo, go, eh, ha, si, do, eh. Thank you for my input, um, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Paul Begay. That, let me go to one more individual, then I can go back to, uh, the presenters. Madam Chair.
I do have a privilege.
Oh, sorry. Honorable Elmer Begay, sorry, Madam Chair Charles Noonan. Uh, Honorable Elmer Begay and then Madam Chair Charles Noonan. Honorable Elmer Begay?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you.
Privilege.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker. Um, other, uh, uh, question of privilege is, uh, Dana and, um, also Mel from the DOJ. Um, I have a question on this, um, um, regarding the deadline, you know, that, uh, on the, on the legislation and all that. And the whereas, um, clause and the finding clause in the le, in the legislation that created, uh, um, hardship, uh, we all know that, uh, it says that due to the time constraint of the CARES Act and projects are not to go beyond, um, December thirtieth. So it created that deadline to where that, uh, any funds that, that are not going to be, um, used and it made a contingency. So right now, uh, just because of that, that's the reason why that, uh, the, the deadline and then this hardship came about. But that contingency is no longer there. This is, uh, eh, the, the federal extended, uh, uh, the deadline. Can we look into that? Because I think that, uh, that, uh, the reason why this hardship came about is that the, eh, it created that contingency because of the deadline. But the deadline is no longer here. It should be automatically just go with the project continued that. Can you look into that? Can you think that way to do that? I know this is easy way for, eh, uh, attorneys to look at it is just because that noon time came around and the deadline's over. Eh, that, that's, that's, w- 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 what about, look at that, that clause that was created. That, that, uh, the, the, the way the hardship, um, language was created was because of the, of the deadline. But that, that deadline is no longer here. That's, uh, can we, can we look at that side of it? The contingency is no longer there now for, for the deadline. It's been extended. That's my question, the privilege, Speaker.
Barbara.
Thank you. Speaker, yeah, I voted.
Speaker, this is Dana.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Delegate Begay. Uh, uh, and I don't disagree with you that, um, uh, the hardship assistance expenditure plan was developed as a contingency, but let's look what happened after. So C J Y sixty-seven twenty was adopted. And in C J Y sixty-seven twenty, on page nine, uh, Q, it says, "The progress of all expenditure plan funded projects shall be reviewed by the Budget and Finance and NABE KIATI Committees during the month of October two thousand twenty. The funding for any project that has not made enough progress to demonstrate that it will be fully completed by December thirtieth, two thousand twenty, will be reallocated to the Hardship Assistance Expenditure Plan through NABE KIATI Committee Resolution." So that started right there in C J Y sixty-seven twenty. That established the legal foundation for moving, uh, the funding for projects that couldn't be completed, uh, by December thirtieth, two thousand twenty, to the Hardship Assistance Plan. Acting under that, um, uh, the authority of C J Y sixty-seven twenty, the nation, uh, excuse me, the council through the NABE KIATI Committee first adopted N A B I O dash forty-nine twenty, um, which, um, and then subsequently amended forty-nine twenty to adopt N A B I D dash sixty-three twenty. Those NABE legislations, uh, what they did was that they took, if you will recall, uh, any, any funds that were not, uh, expended or encumbered by November twentieth, those reverted to the hardship assistance. They have already been reverted. Uh, when, uh, forty-nine twenty was, uh, amended by sixty-three twenty, it set up a, uh, two-tiered system wherein, um, those, uh, those fundings that survived the November twentieth deadline because they were encumbered, as a general rule, if, uh, those funds were not, uh, expended by December twenty-second, they reverted into the Hardship Assistance Plan. They have already, both of the, uh, both the funds on November twentieth and the funds on, uh, December twenty-second, they have already reverted. Uh, sixty-three twenty made one exception, and that was for power line projects, solar projects, water and wastewater projects, broadband and telecommunications projects, COVID- nineteen decontamination and direct care projects. Those types of projects, if they were not, um, expended by December twenty-eighth, excuse me, when I use the word expended, what I mean is, uh, if the goods and services were not, uh, received and such by December twenty-eighth, uh, at noon, they would be reverted to hardship assistance. So those actions, they have already taken place, uh, including the one for today at December twen, um, December twenty-eighth at noon. So there is no options available for going back and extending C J Y sixty-seven twenty's deadline because what, eh, eh, to begin with, uh, it's already been acted on, uh, by NABE. But the other side of it, there's not a, a, the dollars are already in hardship assistance. So extending C J Y sixty-seven twenty does not pull them out of hardship assistance. They are already there. Uh, to get them out of hardship, uh, assistance, uh, and back into the projects that, uh, were to be de-obligated today will require, one, I went through, uh, the four options, it will require one of those options. Um, and so now I, I believe that if the council wishes to, to move the, put the funds back in to those, um, uh, infrastructure and, uh, deconamin, decontamination, direct care projects, uh, there is going to have to be, uh, council legislation or there could be NABE legislation. But just going back and amending C J Y sixty-seven twenty will not accomplish what, what you're hoping for. Uh, thank you, Speaker, and I'm certainly available for follow-up questions.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Barra. With that, we go back to, uh, on, Madam Chair Charles Noonan. Floor's yours. Then I'll go back to the presenters.
Speaker, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Uh, yeah, it should tell us, auto, call, once again, thank you. Um, as I'm sitting here listening to, uh, the report and also the debate of what has been going on, um, I know that, um, that we have talked about this time and time again, kind of gone in circles about this. And, you know, the term integrity comes to mind for me, um, because, you know, when we talk about the integrity of council, when we talk about the integrity of a delegate, we're talking about, you know, the practice of, and being, and, and, and following, you know, that strong moral ethical principles and values. And when I, when I, and I, I share that because, you know, when we go back to our voting records, you know, that's what, mine. Each and every single one of us, we made our stand, we voiced our opinion and our concern when it came to the CARES money. And every single time there was CARES money that was being debated, we voted, knowing what we were doing, knowing what the outcome would be, knowing what it meant. Now, each time we, we vote, that we were going to stand by it. Played with, with our people because, you know, we went back a few times to amend certain things. Yes, there were, uh, good reasons for it, but there was never an explanation given to the people as to why the extensions were moved from the original date. And so now we're sitting here and we're talking about this CARES money once again. And, and I think that, you know, we just need to just get it out to the people right away. All of our Navajo people have been affected by COVID. Not just those who don't have electricity, not just those who don't have running water. Every single one of us. And we have made that statement that COVID doesn't care who you are. It doesn't care how much money you make. It doesn't care what you're, what, you know, where you stand in the community. It doesn't care if you're rich or if you're poor. It has affected every single Navajo person. And I remember making that statement when the very first time that this, this legislation was presented. And even through that, this council came together and we, we, we did talk about projects, many projects, many, many good ideas that we put together in the legislation that were vetoed by President Nez. And now we come back to the question, how do we help our Navajo people? I know that, you know, hearing personally from people, there are a lot of our Navajo people who are hurting financially, and it's not any fault of their own. Many of our Navajo people don't have jobs. And if they don't have jobs, they can't pay their rent, they can't put food on their table. This past weekend, a family of six from the Crown Point area had no food and they reached out to me for help. Thankfully, the Veterans Administration was able to assist this family and they got the money right before Christmas. And even though it wasn't a lot of money, this family was so grateful. And they didn't care about presents, they didn't talk anything about Christmas. They were more worried about how to get food on their table. And when you think about all of those stories out there, every single one of us in our communities have those people. The hardship came about to help the people. And that's what it's going to be doing. I know that there, that, that there's an argument that the hardship only came about because of the timeline. No, it didn't. The hardship came about because we, as a council, we wanted to help our people. So that's how the hardship came about. And even the controller stated, and I remember the very, at the very beginning when the CARES money came out, I remember she talked about, like, this money's really not for projects. But this council went forward and we presented projects. And we still continue to talk about these projects. And we're saying, yes, it's going to help the Navajo people in the long run, but the hard- but the hardship is going to help the people who need help. And so I pray that we don't touch that hardship because we have told the people already that we are going to assist them with the hardship money. And right now, you know, with the presentation that has been given to us, I would like to see the 1,400 per adult and the 475 per child because that's going to really help a lot of families, a lot of families to get on their feet, a lot of families to put food on their table, a lot of families to help pay bills, in some cases, to help catch up on their rent. Because again, all of our Navajo people were affected and continue to still be affected. And it's very, it's very, very expensive. I always say, living on the Navajo Nation is more expensive than living in Washington DC. I lived in Washington DC. And I can say that living here in Shiprock is probably three times more expensive than it is to live in Washington DC. Because in a big metropolitan area, everything is available to you and you can actually get away with credit. Here on the Navajo Nation, it's cash. It's cash upfront and it's all cash, all at once. And that's very difficult to deal with for a lot of families. So I just want to remind this council, that every single one of us who voted for the hardship, who voted during the CARES legislation, we had our say-so, we put in our two cents, we shared our concerns, and we told the people we were going to help them. So I'm hoping that we don't touch the hardship money and that we just give it out to the people. I would love that we just make the decision soon to just say, start sending out the checks because our people need it. So I reserved the rest of my time, Speaker. Thank you.
Chair, you get down to the wire in those five minutes.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker. With that, we go back to-
Speaker, Freeland, can you put me to queue?
Okay.
Speaker.
Let me go back.
Speaker.
Presenters.
Speaker, do you have any, did you get my text? This is Holona.
Yes, this is the queue right now. I have Honorable Holona Chairman Edmund Yasi and Honorable Freeland in the queue right now. But I'm going back to the presenters first. Any response from the presenters? If there's none?
Probably better on queue, Speaker, to the delegate.
You go to the queue then.
Okay. So on the queue. Okay.
Finally, colleagues, time is 4:30 and we are on the second report. We have one more report under Item C, two legislations. And there's a storm brewing. Paul Begay sending it our way. I don't want the staff to stay here that late if there's a storm brewing tonight, colleagues. Honorable Holona, floor's yours.
Well, thank you, Speaker. My colleagues from the Navajo Nation Council, all the people that are listening online, and I hope you all having a great day. Speaker, thank you, and presenter, Controller Ms. Kirk. Good afternoon. I've had a couple of questions on that. You know, I support all the talks and the rhetoric about giving the money out, the way we already have it set up now. There's no going back. I think what we can do, we need to do is to decide on a number of what we're going to pay. I don't know, since we've been talking, we've, I've heard 14, 15, 1,200, different numbers. We need to decide on exactly what that number was. And in the beginning, I believe I heard it was 1,250 when it started out, that we could do, if we get enough money, that we could do that much. But we need to decide on that number right now. And if there's, I guess, Madam Controller, you said there was around 190,000 sure applicants that are ready, that have been verified and that can be paid today, probably. And that would leave another, oh, I don't know how much you have, but I think there are 30,000 people that need to get verified. I think if you decide on a number now and figure out what the price is, match it up and save some back, start paying those out as you get verified. But the bulk of the deal needs to be sent out. The sooner the better for the people. We've been holding back and holding back from the very beginning when we got this thing started. Applications were not processed right. We had problems with that timeframe. We've been holding back again on that. We said maybe before Christmas there was going to be something sent out for the deadline. Now it's after January 1st. So I think we need to make our mind up right now and just decide on that, what the number's going to be and move forward from that point. Because we keep talking about it and talking about it and talking about it and talking about it and we never get it decided on. It needs to be decided now and those people need to be paid. We just need to get the money moving out. I think there's going to be plenty of money left over on the end if we keep moving all that money into there. We have another year to settle the rest. I think a lot of those applications that are not completed are probably not going to be good applications because there was a whole bunch already that were duplicated. And so, you know, I support that right now, that measure, that we need to decide how much it's going to be and just start sending those checks out. You know, we already made, like Charles Newton said, we already made that decision. And right now, the people out there are looking at it that they're going to get help. And this is the best way to help them right now. We can always go back to our water projects and our electrical lines with the money that we were already holding back to spend on that project. And I think that was part of the CSN fund that was already allocated out, a lot of these funds. And still, and start working back again on our living water and electricity and working on our broadband projects for the Navajo Nation. And then we had to see what the pandemic's going to do also. Right now, that bill that went and passed in the US Senate and Congress and the President signed that bill, the new administration is already looking forward to increasing another bill and to give more money to the people. If President Trump don't get it done in this next 20 days, 30 days in his office when he's trying to get more money out there to the people, the new administration's already looking at extending another package of CARES funding. So with any luck on that funding, when it comes through, we might give them a little extra cash and additional money from that to help the people on the Navajo Nation as well. You can always lobby for it when the time comes.
Aye.
So those are my view, my point of view, and I support all those who want to go ahead and do the hardship. It's already there, so. Thank you, Speaker, and everybody on the line, my colleagues from the Navajo Nation Council.
That, moving on down, Chairman Yasi. On the report.
Speaker, just, and members of the council and to all the presenters and everyone that is listening, I just wanted to say a few words on all the fundings and all, even though we want to get the money out, as we say, to the people, you know, also to the chapters like we wish we had, you know, the chapters where the individuals that are out with our people more, you know, and really know, got a good understanding who needs help and what needs to be done. That's just how I feel. And, you know, and I wish we could just all, in the first place, you know, of course, we have so many questions and what we could have done. But, you know, I know I remember saying that if we only could just get, you know, everyone, you know, at the, you know, phone lines and try to work out an agreement and get it done and get the money out. But of course, you know, we have our own different views and our own points, which is understandable. But, you know, just like the family dinner table, when there's something that needs to be done at the home level, we always sit at the table and, you know, try to work it out where everybody is okay with that. And so maybe we ought to look at that more in a deeper way to get this fundings out. You know, we got a second chance now, you know, to get it out. And so, yes, we all know how important it is to help our people. And, you know, I always say with the amount of our Navajo people that we've lost, you know, it would have wiped out a small tribe already, you know. And we're getting hit harder and still, the numbers are still high, you know, with this COVID. And still, everyone is living with fear. One suggestion, maybe that could help us to spend the money, let's just do a personal referendum and let the people vote on it. Let them decide, you know. Give them the questionnaire, let them vote by phone via email or whatever to keep them safe, and take a survey, you know, and let them tell us how to do it, you know. A personal referendum. Say, okay, President Nez and Vice President Lizer and council, we've tried, and, you know, let's let them handle it. Let's listen to them, like we always say, you know. So, but I'm just praying and hoping that, you know, we all set our pride aside. And I just am praying that we could just all work together. You know, New Year's coming up in several days. And that's my prayer, you know. That's my prayer. 14 years on the Navajo Nation Council. You know, and I've been praying a lot during those 14 years. And so my prayers is that we work together, you know, and hopefully President Nez and Lizer and all of the main individuals are listening. Again, pleading that we work together. So I know, Speaker, we're running on time and all. The wind is blowing pretty good here in Coolidge, New Mexico, and we are praying for snow too as well. So, Speaker, that's all I have to say. I don't want to reserve my time. But maybe we, you know, you know, look into the personal referendum and listen to the people and how we spend, how we should spend this money and give the directions to the controller and how, you know, which way it should go, since we always say it's their money. So, Speaker, we pray for good health. We pray for safety. We pray for our loved ones and we pray that we can get this money out and to help our people, as always say, with all due respect. Speaker, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Yasi. Moving on down, Honorable Freeland. On the report.
Thank you, Speaker. All right, Speaker, thank you. On the report. Thank you for the report, Madam Controller, my colleagues, Nana. Like my colleague, Honorable Alma Begay, I have a lot of people in need. I have a lot of people needing infrastructure, water, electric, especially out in Eastern Navajo. But yet, you know, I think our minds were already set on 1230. We didn't do anything to alleviate or prepare for the possibility of an extension. So we're beyond that and I have to move on myself. And as a delegate from Eastern Navajo, you know, it's real important that I do my best to advocate and help promote our area and try to bring basic necessities to our people. It's really unfortunate, Shantah, that we had to, we had to set expectations. And a division was created at that time, a division between our people, our government, and our chapters, our programs and our divisions. And that's what I witnessed. That's what I witnessed during this whole experience. And it's still going on today. I tell my chapters, you know, this, it's unfortunate that this CARES Act has brought out the best, but it's also brought out the worst of our people, the behaviors. When you have chapters officials or when you have chapter administrative staff receiving death threats because our people are going to the chapters expecting or demanding their checks right then and there, that's a crazy, a really, a really crazy scenario to think about. But it's also brought out the best too. People asking questions, people wanting to know how they can receive the money, inquiring. And I really, I really hope that, you know, our people use this money wisely. The day that we set these expectations, I was getting messages already on social media asking if I was supportive of hardship. Of course, I'm supportive of hardship. I wish we would have called it something else besides hardship. But you know what, Shantah, we've already set that expectation. We've already, we already have it in the minds of our people that they're already going to get the $1,500 or the $1,400 now. So I think we just have to fulfill it and keep that obligation and commitment that we've made. I wish we could have thought about this sooner before we voted on that Navi vote. That one Navi vote, I think about that, where we allocated all the funds to go directly to hardship. I wish we could have done that differently and kept our options open. Because I kind of knew this 50, this, getting this extension was 50/50. It could have, it could have worked, but we didn't, we didn't prepare adequately for it. So, Eddie Shantah, I really want to thank you and it's a great learning experience for all of us. I hope we don't have to ever go through this again. I really hope not. I hate COVID. I lost a lot of good people. We've all lost a lot of good people. I just hope we don't have to ever deal with this again. Thank you, Speaker, my colleagues, Eddie Shantah. Have a good day. I'll wait in my time, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. On the report. Moving on down, Honorable Eugene Seau.
Should I, Speaker?
Yes.
Okay, sometimes I get it on Newton. I'd not be, I'd still say the same old thing again, I reckon. Hardship. You know, I don't know if anyone, if you ever saw anybody playing with a dog or a kitty, putting food out there and they jump on it and you laugh about it and you can all start saying things about it. It seems that, to me, that I see what we're doing now if we're going to change the money that's been going into the hardship. I could ask a question to every one of the consultative that will be doing this. Yes, we made our decision. Of course, at the time, the circumstances, at the time we made that legislation, it turned into a resolution. We put, we, we, we fought it to be diverted into the hardship so we can help more people that are really in the front line. Et cetera. There's how much hardship we have. And that's why I was trying to tell the Washington lady that I want to talk to, cousin-elect, let him know what's really going on. Any Indians that are bad on there, but they, but they are the whole God, they put us in there. Because this Congress, they not a deal. But now that he got with the lesbian natives, we went to litigation with him again.
To point that out. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you.
Speaker, this is Controller.
Madam Controller, go ahead.
Oh, I don't hear you. Speaker. Um, uh, so I don't, um, 24th Navajo Nation Council, I don't, um, had the hot seat open, I don't kid again. So, uh, just to follow up, uh, what, uh, Mr. Rotis has stated regarding delegate, uh, Halona. Um, basically, uh, the reason why I have different numbers and they're not, uh, set in stone yet is because, um, it is true that the various resolutions, et cetera, it does say that it's up to fifteen hundred, up to five hundred, um, that would be your, your maximum limit. Um, so the numbers actually depend and they change. They depend on a couple of things. One is the number of applicants. And of course, as I just mentioned in my report, the number of eligible applicants, um, depends on, of course, how many we got. The other thing is how many we can verify. So, a lot of these applications have problems with them. Um, so, for example, uh, they may have duplicate, uh, CIBs. We may have names that are different, birth dates that are different, and so forth. So, we have to go through and verify the applications and so forth. Um, so, that's the reason why, you know, I don't have numbers and those numbers change. So, we are working through them. Um, I did give you the latest numbers. Um, so, and then we have to work through those exceptions. That's why we call, we email, we text, um, the various applicant applicants. So, that's why the numbers are changed and the numbers aren't set in stone. And the reason why we do that is we have to verify that eligibility criteria so that when the Inspector General of Treasury comes through, they look into our application portal and all that information there. So, we can pass audit. Um, the other number that's critical is, of course, the number that's in the hardship fund, hardship pot. And as you know, that's been changing, uh, throughout the last few months. Um, so, right now, because of those deadlines, uh, from NABE, the dash sixty-three dash twenty, and the amendments to that, um, the forty-nine dash twenty, uh, and the deadlines, twelve twenty-two, and tw- and today's deadline. Um, so if you, if you, if you want to know, uh, those deadlines are very key. And so, that determines how much gets sent into the hardship pot. Um, things as, you know, uh, expenditures, encumbrances, the obligation, all of those things we talk about. Um, so, the more we get a picture of how much is in the pot determines how much we're able to pay out. But of course, that depends on the number of applicants that are verified and ready to go. So, that is the reason why the numbers change. That is the reason why myself, I don't determine, you know, oh, it's going to be this, you know? And, and so, that's how it works. Um, and, and I know you made comments that the numbers are changing and that is the reason why. So, um, the other thing is, uh, I did earlier in my report, I mentioned a hundred and ninety thousand that are ready to go. Um, we do have to still do our office and, and our consultants who we, in conjunction, working together, we have to verify addresses, um, things as going through LexisNexis and make sure we have valid addresses as well. We have to still do those, uh, type of upfront work. We are still getting emails, um, phone calls of applicants who are saying that their addresses have changed. So, uh, the, the more upfront work we do, the better because once we send those checks out, um, then we'll end up doing on the, work on the backend. So, uh, there is a little bit more work to be done. Um, so I just wanted to let you all know. Um, so, that's what's going on. Um, uh, just to, to let you know, um, it wasn't on me to decide, you know, how much and so forth. I, I have to work through those two sets of numbers, number of applicants that are eligible and the hardship pot. So, um, and those are not our things beyond my control. Um, I don't, I'm not one to expend those dollars. Those are up to the projects, the enterprises, the various programs and divisions and so forth. And then also the timelines, that's up to this body, they put in the timelines. So, they all impact those two very important numbers. So, that's how it works. Um, so, the others, the other person that had-
Clear?
Yeah.
Coming?
Okay. All right. So, the other, uh, delegate, Paul Begay, um, uh, Adi Datsunchil and Paige. So, the, he had a question on, um, how secure are, are information, our vital statistics information, census number, et cetera. Um, I just would like to say it's pretty secure. Um, the, we work through a portal. The portal will belong to the nation. Um, and then also we've done, um, the records that will be uploaded or has been, um, for Vital Statistics Census Office to their progeny database. So, that's separate from the portal. Um, but in terms of the application that's within the portal, um, so, the portal itself, uh, before we rolled it out, we did perform penetration testing, uh, to see if anybody would hack into it. They were unable to. So, we do the highest level of data encryption. Um, and so, so we work with, um, the industry standards to keep everything secure, um, and so forth. So, it, I just wanted to let you know. And then, of course, I've reported in the past that we don't ask for the full nine digits of the social security number. Um, sometimes when our call center calls out to individuals, we ask to verify, you know, who we're talking to. And so, we don't really use, uh, social security number unless we absolutely have to. And when we do, we only ask for the nine, the last four digits. And so, um, uh, so we have all of those in terms of, uh, uh, security of the data itself. So, just wanted to answer, um, delegate Paul Begay's question, Adi and I just kid. So, uh, I think, uh, it is, other than that, um, I think there's mainly just comments. So, um, I, I, of course,
Thank you, Madam Controller. If there's no other comments from the, uh, responses from the presenters, let me go back to the board. I have, uh, a couple of new colleagues in the queue. So, let me go ahead and go towards them. Again, colleagues, the time now is five o'clock and we still have a couple more reports on the lineup. Honorable Charlene So, go ahead.
Thank you, Shajet Ashwadita.
Oh.
Okay. Um, Madam Controller, I had to quit in this. Now, I'm so thank you for the update. I don't, there's so many people listening. I was kind of reading the comments on social media. Um, you know, the projected date was December, no, a day or January, what is the exact projection time if we were to go through with this hardship assistance? I don't, what I'm wondering too is, wouldn't it have been a better situation if we were to just, um, the applications? The one that are filled out correct, that have the documents and that are authorized and then correct? And pay out at December first, yeah, and pay as you go in that perspective. I'm wondering if that would have played out differently to this day. Because right now, it just seems like the amount is very low. And it's only going to pay a light bill or it's only going to provide a week worth of food. Of course, can, is there just a projection date that our people can, um, you know, because we get these questions every day. Um, I was in Mexican water, um, helping out with my community. And then those were some of the questions that were posed to me by my constituents. And I reserve my time.
As every time, Honorable Charlene So, three minutes and four seconds. Let me go back to, uh, Madam Controller. That specific question.
Speaker, can you hear me?
Mm-mm.
Oh, okay. Um, I don't, she had speaker and then, um, members of the Navajo Nation Council, Otto, um, Chanelle, delegate Charlene So, Araby Naiden, Kedig, um, Amelia, uh, delegate Halona. Um, I was explaining the, the process. Um, so, I'll, um, essentially say the same thing. Um, so, the reason why, um, the dates are changing is because of the, uh, the way that the subsequent, um, resolutions came about, including the NABEO, the one that put deadlines in. Um, because if they're not expended by, uh, November twentieth, it falls to the hardship fund. That type of language. So, you know, the, the, to the extent they're not expended by, uh, um, November twentieth, um, then it goes into the hardship. So, basically, that hardship pot was still, there's still money going in. So, I don't, a day none, a twelve, December twenty-eighth. So, they either had to be expended or they had to be, uh, encumbered. So, you either to the, by the twentieth or the, well, yeah. So, I don't think that the, whether it's contract or agreement or purchase orders, there's December twenty-second, December twenty-eighth. So, we have the November date, November twentieth date that we first had to deal with. I don't, it, then it goes into the hardship. December twenty-second, yeah, certain contracts, KOs, there's still monies going into the hardship pot. So, the amount of money that goes into the hardship pot, the applications. So, um, you mentioned early December. Um, so, we closed the application period, um, end of December, um, November. So, uh, we still had to scan all of those paper documents. Otto, we put them in the database, our portal. Um, so, Otto, taking all of that, because not everything's going to be perfect on these applications. We have duplicate applications. We have applications with errors, no CIB numbers. Otto, on top of that, our database that we relied upon, which is the Vital Statistics Census Database, it wasn't the best that we thought it was. Um, so, um, because all the applications, we had to verify the CIBs and so forth. So, as I described earlier, so, it's not, if I'm, we're talking two hundred and ninety thousand applica- applications. Um, I've gotten questions about, you know, uh, how much our consultants make. Um, I will say, you know, they did a lot of work, uh, sorting through all of that because we have to verify, people are enrolled. We have to verify that they suffered a financial hardship. Um, and that's all on the application. So, you know, that kind of had an impact as well as all these different deadlines. So, they're all moving targets. So, we had, um, the deadlines of, uh, December twenty-second and then today. So, it goes into the hardship pot. So, we determine how much is in the fund. So, that is the reason why in the various resolutions, legislations, it says up to fifteen hundred, or up to five hundred. So, it depends on what goes into the hardship pot. Today, it's, Otto, the other thing is, as I mentioned earlier, these applications, um, we have to figure out how many do we have. Um, we are still working through some of them. Some people don't answer their phones. They, they haven't responded. There are some people, they, they have name differences. We have some people that we're still trying to ask them to give us their, our CIBs, that makes up the two hundred and eighty-two thousand. So, we have to sort through them. So, about out of the two hundred and eighty-two, a hundred and ninety, they're ready to go. But the other moving number is how much is in the pot. So, between those two, then we determine how much we can pay. So, if we would have never have been, we wouldn't have paid anything out beginning of December because, um, we did not know how much is available in the hardship pot. Plus, you know, I don't know if we would have determined those that were eligible at, at that point in time. So, the other thing, of course, is the federal deadline. Um, if push came to shove and there was no deadline and we still had the thirtieth, then, uh, under federal compliance rules, what we would have to do by the thirtieth is we have to determine all the eligible, eligible applicant. We have to determine all the pots, the hardship pot, and by the thirtieth, and then, uh, document it, um, and certify that, and meet the federal compliance component. Um, once we do that, then we can pay, you know, uh, into January. That's under the federal rules, assuming there was no extension. Now that we have an extension, as I was saying earlier, then that gives us a little bit more time to, um, work out all those exceptions, the difference between the two hundred and eighty thousand and the hundred and ninety thousand Navajos. So, hopefully that explains it. Um, so, it's not up to me. I'm not the one that put up, put in the deadlines and then worked this mechanism. The mechanism is that, um, some of these things, to the extent that, the, you know, projects aren't, weren't done or, uh, contracts weren't fully expended, or purchase orders weren't fully expended by these deadlines, then things were going through the hardship. So, hopefully that explains. I know it's a little, it can get a little confusing. But we determine how much is available to all the eligible applicants and that determines how much the payments are. So, that's why the numbers change. That's why it is a lot of work to, uh, send out, you know, and it will be a lot of work to send out paychecks to, you know, close to three hundred thousand people. So, in my explanation, I know it sounds redundant, but, um, hopefully it, it clarifies. I don't hear you.
Thank you, Controller. That, colleagues, let me go back to the board. Honorable Kian Begay, Jay, on the report.
Uh, just quickly, I believe, specifically, just to be on record, uh, I believe the Navajo Nation Council should just let this particular funding go directly to the Navajo people as we speak. Um, been called Controller, I mean, what's the solution for you and your office to expedite getting this funding out? Uh, but I'd like for your office, whoever is a control, making sure that those had already applied and that they have some issues with their application, uh, for your office to review them rather than not, uh, just, uh, get them out of the way. You just indicated that we don't have a fine, the best, uh, census enrollment process or data that we don't, we don't have. I guess that's another issue that the Navajo Nation government needs to look into. The Census Office really needs to provide, NBI, A really needs to provide the Navajo Nation government or the Navajo Nation Council. Specifically, that, uh, is it really necessary that our Navajo people have to go to the office? I mean, I mean nowadays, technology, we get our voter registration, we get our vehicle registration, we get our photo, driver's license and everything online. I mean, why can't our Navajo people, I mean, there's just too much paperwork. I mean, we're talking about a hundred, I mean, two hundred plus thousand papers that needs to be produced there where it could be easily be, uh, I guess be, uh, have a database right in front of the offices to verify that they, these individuals are there. And then we can just encourage and ask the controllers, what's the best solution to expedite in getting this funding out as quickly as possible? We've got so many areas that are Navajo people are struggling with. Uh, specifically is probably, uh, into a vehicle payments and, and whatnot. And then at the end of the day, uh, the, on the other hand, what does this show to the Navajo, what does this, uh, I guess tells to the, I guess to the, to the world of why the Navajo Nation couldn't be able to spend this amount of money for infrastructure? I, again, don't get me wrong, give it to the people. But on the other hand, why wasn't the Navajo Nation be able to, uh, uh, finish these infrastructures and this amount of money if it wasn't for hardship? Just imagine that amount of money would have been gone back to the Navajo Nation, to the federal government. So, I know there's a lot of internal process and policy that we really need to deal with. My suggestion to the Navajo Nation government and to the council is to let prepare, uh, Quado Navajo Nation Washington Office, a lot of these available funds. And I'm sure just the, uh, I'm sure there were some, there's some fundings also in the Defense Bill, which US Congress just barely, I mean, just, uh, uh, did an override of the President's veto. But the point is, is that how can the Navajo Nation prepare and be prepared of amount of funding that will be requesting that, that we will be able to spin it or, and develop these infrastructures across the Navajo Nation? I mean, a lot of these policies internally. So, we, we continue to say that we need to resolve it, but. So, again, what's the specific? The Controller can make recommendation to get these fundings out as quickly as possible to the Navajo people, Chairman.
Thank you. That, we go back to, uh, Madam Controller. Quick timeline has been announced, but yes. Madam Controller.
Um, oh, Speaker, I don't, to expedite these payments. Number one, I would say stop amending. So, um, the more there, there's, if you change the law, then at our level with, uh, Office of the Controller, Otto, we have to change and, and, and follow the law and implement the things that happen. So, if you want it to happen, then there wouldn't be any more changes. Uh, allow us to see it through. The other thing would be to just, uh, to the public, um, to the public is, um, encourage those, um, in the community to respond, um, to check your emails. Uh, if you got a text, um, I do get people asking me questions as well. They need help, so probably appealing to the public. In terms of making sure, uh, everybody has their CIBs, their, their information correct and so forth. We can get work through these exceptions. So, um, eh, eh, yeah, so we've been working on those for the last few weeks and we got a lot accomplished, but there's still, um, some more work to be done on those. Um, so the other thing is we can, we can, um, once we, once we determine the, um, how much goes to the hardship pot, um, that goes to the hardship. Once we make that determination, um, then we're able to start, uh, sending out checks. So, um, so we're working through those and we're, um, um, so eh, eh, yeah, so we're hoping that assuming we figure out the, 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 the amount that's in the hardship. Uh, shoot, there's no January calendar in front of me. Um, uh, we can start, uh, sending out checks as soon as we get the bear mailing verification and so forth. Um, so eh, eh, yeah, so we can, um, work on that. Uh, I would say in the next two weeks to see how it goes, um, and then also keep working on those exceptions. Um, but those, those applications are ready to be paid out. We can work on those again. That's close to two hundred thousand, a hundred and ninety thousand. Um, that would be the first batch to get those paid out and continue to work on the other, the other ones because I don't want to see, uh, any, any of our people left behind and not get paid. Um, but we need their help, um, uh, in terms of, um, submitting their, their documents and so forth. Eh, eh, yeah, so those are two, you know, I think we can work on it. We're at the tail end, um, of, of getting this done. And I do believe that, um, the people, you know, know their needs and they can. Pay their bills and so forth, you know, there are a lot of people who are depending on this. So anything helps at this point, um, on, so eh, eh, yeah.
Thank you. Madam Controller. That colleagues, move on down.
Question of privilege.
Question of privilege, Honorable Eugene So.
Uh, to Controller and maybe Dana, request to, um, Dana's options. Number one, would that affect or would there any change, any change what, uh, you're doing, Controller? Or would you rather be keep doing what you're doing? Or Dana, how would that help to get all the application confirmed? Maybe like she's saying, two weeks within those time, so we can get everybody, uh, some chairs fund? That's my question. As a legislator, forward, going forward.
Question of privilege, uh, Madam Controller. Then I'll go to Ms. Barbara.
Um, Speaker, uh, this is Controller, um, option one.
What did she just say?
Eh, yeah, option one. I don't know what's in regard to.
Uh, Speaker, this is, this is Dana.
Yes.
Um, so I, I am not exactly what, uh, sure exactly what, um, uh, Delegate So's question was, but the, the four options, and I did send out, uh, an email to, uh, Council. I'm not sure I sent it to the, uh, Controller because it was attorney client privilege, but I, I will forward that. But there were four options that I identified that, um, would go back and, uh, for depending on the approach, they would, uh, so option one was to amend the NABI, uh, resolution. That would, uh, take those December twenty eighth, uh, projects that were to go into the hardship fund, that would retroactively extend that deadline. That was one option. Uh, another option was to do the same through emergency council, uh, legislation. Um, but that does, both of those do have a retroactive amendment. Um, the third option was to actually do a, uh, allocation from, uh, the hardship assistance to fund those, I'm going to call them December twenty eighth projects. Um, and that would be an actual allocation from hardship assistance to fund those projects. The fourth, uh, option I sent out is, is more complex, but what it would essentially do, uh, it, it would not extend the NABI resolution, but what it would do would be, um, on gen, the hardship assistance, all funds would roll into, uh, hardship assist, assistance, uh, be allocated, reallocated to hardship assistance until January fifteenth. And that January fifteenth was just a date that doesn't have a lot of foundation in it. But, uh, so all hardship, um, all dollars would roll into hardship up until January fifteenth. Um, by that point in time, the Controller would have a determination, hopefully by the final amount she needed, uh, to fund the hardship applicant. Any excess dollars would then be allocated from hardship to the December twenty eighth projects. Um, if there were any still excess dollars that the December twenty eighth projects didn't need, um, that amount would go to gaming for their COVID nineteen response. So those are the, uh, four options that I did send out, uh, to the Council. Uh, I hope that was helpful and perhaps, um, the Controller can use that info to, uh, further respond to Delegate So.
Honorable Eugene So.
I heard a good second.
I, 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 I just heard, I, I, I don't think I would want to do any one, any one of those options. Thank you for explanation.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Eugene So. With that, let me move on down. I have, uh, colleague, uh, Honorable Vince James. For yours on the report. Honorable Vince James.
Speaker, do you have my name in there? This is Delegate Yolter.
Um, I haven't gone back to reserve time yet, Honorable Yolter. You're, you're on the list.
Take care, bless my friend, thank you.
With that, uh, Honorable Vince James.
Yeah, there is Speaker. Other members of the Council. Uh, uh, Controller Kurt. How many employees are currently working with you, um, from the firm? My number two question is going to be if OMB was to, uh, transfer all the funds for your appropriation to submit, how long will that take for you once that is, um, that, once that takes place? Number three, number three is what is it that we need to do as Council to make sure that OMB starts working on this, um, starting tomorrow to practically revert all the funds into hardship for our people? Reserve my time, thank you.
That. Honorable James. Reserve your time at three minutes and forty-four seconds. That, back to the panel. For response. There's no response. I don't have anybody on reserve time. Let me go ahead, I mean, I don't have anybody in queue. Let me go back to reserve time. Honorable Slater, two minutes and ten seconds.
Yield my time, Speaker.
Will do time. Honorable Daniels, two minutes and forty-two seconds. Well, Daniels.
Uh, Speaker, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to yield the rest of my time. I, yeah, kiss.
Oh, thank you. Move on down. Honorable Elmer Begay, thirteen seconds.
Speaker, um, I'll go ahead and wave up.
Hey, thank you, Honorable Elmer Begay. Honorable Wanika. One minute thirty-six seconds.
Speaker, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, Honorable Wanika.
Okay, uh, in, in reference to what our, can, our control was saying that, uh, December, I mean, January the fifteenth? I don't know, uh, the number of applicants will probably increase because she's still working with, uh, some of them. But also at the same time, the amount of hardship will probably be going up. Uh, would it make a difference, um, if we don't, uh, uh, into the hardship money and just let it be? Would, uh, the amount per individual go up by the fifteenth? Uh, that's my question. And, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, presentation and I hope we can all just, uh, uh, leave the hardship monies alone. Uh, I will waive the rest of my time, Speaker, thank you.
That, Madam Controller. Response.
Um, okay, uh, Speaker, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, uh, members of the Navajo Nation Council, uh, uh, been by those key, uh, uh, Vince James, um, three questions. Um, so, uh, number one was employees that are working or I, I'm assuming they're talking about, okay, um, the outsourced, uh, personnel, um, in-house. I have a hundred and twenty approximately at OOC. Not all of them work on cares. Um, mostly contract accounting, purchasing, um, are, are the ones working on cares related. Um, so, uh, we have, uh, a number of, uh, other, uh, outsourced, um, firms. Um, we have the three. We have Noon and Associates that, uh, varies. Some of these vary through depending on how much work we're doing, we're charged with. Um, so we have up to ten working and I know they've had some temporaries as well too. But I know five of them are Navajos, um, including a couple of Navajo CPAs. Um, a lot of the work has been done by Baker Tilly. Of course, they have a lot of resources. So they have hired, uh, forty Navajos, um, but it, it ebbs and flows. But at the peak, uh, mainly working on hardship is about four hundred and fifty that are charging, um, to do work on the hardship. And then we have Moss Adams, which handles our external audit and, um, so there, they've begun the single audit and the, um, I believe we've done the entrance conferences on the single audit and, um, so they will be auditing the cares activity. So we have up to ten, uh, auditors working on that. So those are all cares related work that has to be done. Um, so eh, eh, yeah, that goes to your first question. Your other question, number two, um, I believe that question is once OMB transfers, then, um, when can payment be expected? I believe that's your question. Um, so, uh, um, I, I think, uh, pay, it would be nice to get the, uh, transfers done in the next two weeks because if we want to shoot for two weeks to get everything, at least the first round of, uh, payment, uh, accomplished, then we need those transfers. Um, uh, so just wanted to let you know that, um, because simultaneously we should be working on, uh, getting all of the numbers, um, whatever the obligations need to happen, that liquidation and determining the fin, the final pot and the budgeting, it's just a reallocation. Um, so hopefully that happens in the next two weeks, um, and then we're able to make payments. Keep in mind, um, as I mentioned earlier with our analysis, um, a hundred and ninety thousand Navajos are ready to go to be paid out. Uh, we do need the hardship business unit to have two hundred and, I can't see this late in the day, two hundred and thirty-four, I can't see, two hundred and thirty-four million in, in the hardship business unit, um, in order to pay a hundred and ninety thousand Navajos. Um, those are the ones without exceptions and they're ready to go. Um, and, uh, your last question, OMB, what can Council do, uh, for OMB to work on this? Um, I think that was the question. I'm not sure, I think, uh, I'm not sure what their process is. I think they're better suited to answer the question, um, but I believe, I'm not sure if. I think they're better suited to answer the question, um, but I believe, I'm not sure if they have forms that need to be filled out. I know with OOC, our business units, we had to get our forms filled out to get them to reallocate, um, the, the, the business units we had, um, into the hardship. So, I'm not sure if they're requiring that of everybody, um, for control purposes, they might be. If that's the case, then, uh, they, they need those, those forms from all the various, uh, divisions and programs. So, hopefully, they're around, so they can clarify or add to that. Um, auto, um, Delbit, Edison, Wanika, um, I think, um, your question is essentially, um, uh, if there's, if there's a, i- i- in the next two weeks, um, we do, when we do our analysis on the hardship program, uh, we, we have assumptions, um, that we do, um, I did talk about the two hundred and eighty-two thousand forty-nine people, um, those include all the exceptions that, you know, we, we think we're gonna work through. So, our assumption is that every exception that we have, we're going to solve those exceptions. So, um, the numbers that I'm giving you is the numbers, making the assumption that everybody clears their, um, their exceptions, they give us their CIBs, they co- we're in contact with them, we work out all the issues. Um, and so, therefore, the numbers, those are the numbers I'm running. Um, and so, obviously, uh, the pool of applicants, I think you're asking about whether, you know, we're gonna be opening backup, uh, you know, for those, um, situations, um, I, you know, we haven't really thought about that, but, but of course, that would require, you know, um, additional funding. Um, so, that's the other, uh, kind of a sticky, uh, question regarding whether, you know, we're opening up for people that didn't get a chance to apply, or, you know, um, and so forth. Um, so that's the other thing. Um, a- and so, um, I, I forget who was asking this question, uh, maybe it was Eugene. So, um, given the options, anytime, uh, you, um, extend deadlines, et cetera, then basically, you're saying that, uh, those projects will get the funding, um, and see it through, and then that means less going into the hardship. Um, and, and then, um, of course, uh, if there's less going in, then the number per adult and child will be less than the numbers I, I was giving. So, right now, um, and I think earlier I stated this, um, right now, there's two hundred and eighty-four million approximately, and for adults, that's about twelve hundred, and for minors, that's, uh, about four hundred and ten dollars. You know, um, those are all estimates again. Um, and, and so, if, if, um, some of these revert to the, uh, have reverted to the hardship, um, then if we're looking at about three hundred and thirty, uh, then adults would be fourteen hundred, and children would be four hundred and seventy-five each. So, those are kinda, gives you an idea of how, what the numbers we're looking at. So, e de ya, kud, e do. Um, uh, e de ya, those are my responses, iha ha.
Thank you. That's, let me go ahead and, um, continue to move on down on, uh, reserve time. Next, uh, the, the, next colleague is. Hey, Honorable Charlene So, three minutes and four seconds.
Oh, iha, shi, shi ya, or, shi, na, na, ado, shindali, ya, ya, eh. Um, thank you for the explanation, it does bring a lot of perspective. Zai ego, um, nih na nish, um, but, eh, I see that, Controller. And, you know, when it, where I stand, shi, shi, sas, niki, eh, I am all for infrastructure. It is really, it, it does bring a lot of happiness and joy for me to see a family, um, be over, overwhelmed with happiness and gratitude when they first flick that light switch on, and electricity, water, da. And then for them to turn on the faucet. That makes me happy, that makes me feel like I, I'm doing something for the people. So, we, we always get ourselves, we're always in a position where we have to make difficult choices on behalf of our people. You know, I just hope that our, our people understand that there are so many alternatives and options, and that we're really doing the best that we can, that these dialogues and discussions happen for a reason, so that we can come to a consensus and making the best decision for our people. And it's not done out of neglect or recklessness. It takes a lot of time and thought and understanding, and I wish it was so simple that everybody could get that fifteen hundred dollars. You know, it's just reading some of the comments, they said fifteen hundred dollars, promised. A few seconds later, boom, only two fifty. And the same thing with the Trump stimulus, they're saying that two thousand, promised. Boom, only six hundred. And so, e, kuda, niki, I really hope our people understand there's, there is reasons for these that we come down to. Auto, and for our controller to be in charge of all of this, oh, waz, na, nishko, eh. So, eh, iha, ni, da, da, shni, auto, na, 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 da, nishiki, the employees. And, you know, that's where I stand, I, I want to say, I'm all for infrastructure. But then again, you know, uh, people are just waiting, they, I, I don't know what other homes are like. These financial relief is probably what they need. So, eh, ah, kinsigal, but, not that, niki, let's just not make any amendments now to that, uh, resolution. Eh, qu, I, I had to think long and hard about this. And, Controller, you know, I, I just want to make sure, de, qu, amendment, auto, na, de, la, go. If we didn't do, if we don't do any more add-ons, if we don't revert it to infrastructure, eh, shi, ah, nida, everything's gonna fall through, is the printing paper ready for the checks? Eh, ah, skopan, sis, keso, I just want everything to go out. Um, ah, kinsigal, de, qu, shi ya, ya, ha, zi, eki, Honorable, um, T. Allen Begay. Eh, eh, ben, na, ch, adi, shna, shindali, de, qu, ashone, ah, skopan, eh, eh, oh, de, ah, ah, kinsigal, for, to see everything is in place, iha ha.
Great, thank you. Charlene So. That, let me move on down. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair, three minutes and thirty-six seconds.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
That's the Speaker, good afternoon. Oh, ya, eh, do, nishin, da, his, na, crap, this, ba, na, de, eh, auto, Controller, Kirk, so, later. Auto, na, Speaker, and also, I'll have a twenty-four nation, twenty-four, Honorable Nation Council. Chi, kodo, o, ba, ye, ba, dis, we, go, na, re, eh, se, ya, se, ya, o, ba, dis, this is my part here. Water, water, da, he, oh, passion, oh, eh, kodo, eh, uh, mini, mil, water, la, crap, che, da, eh, enti, dis, sh, uh, which was not ready, shi, do, eh, my agent, eh, ro, be, na, eh, tna, yellow hair. Eh, eh, na, eh, eh, de, was, eh, na, pad, da, da, na, eh, shi, do, eh, kodo, to, na, na. Auto, another one, I recommend another one, or, rab, uh, waterline project, na, one point five million. Eh, ro, be, ha, na, shi, do, eh, to, na, na. Oh, kuda, kodi, care, ek, money, di, audit, because, duration, eh, very short, eh, kuda. Ako, kodi, eh, ya, eh, uh, as, na, kuda, eh, ye, go, na, kuda, tao, di, koda, dish, on the care, ek, money. Tana, re, eh, ya, as, eh, na, ay, ha, na, tadi, eh, staff, um, officer, Controller, ki, eh, call, center, the call, na, you keep referring, but, uh, OOC, eh, you know, eh, is, ba, na, ya, na, auto, ba, na, na, ba, na, na, chis, eh, eh, support, center. Are you talking about OOC, SMI, eh, support, within the OOC office? Ba, na, tadi, chis, ay, ya, di, ay, eh, or you have a separate group, such, uh, the pressing, da, nish, na, eh, the consultant, da, eh, da, eh, you, speakers, and tell us, da, auto, na, da, auto, che, da, eh, da, eh, na, oh, kuda, eh, ya, kha, na, kuda, na. Eh, ben, na, da, na, press, eh, da, ha, na, na, de, eh, press, eh, eh, based on your, uh, your, for immediate release, December fifth, eh, da, kuda, eh, eh, kodi, eh, ben, na, shi, yosh, ti, akor, ah, eh, kodo, eh, press, eh, da, ha, na, na, kuda, eh, ya. Eh, kuda, eh, da, hang up immediately, call this number, ha, no, eh, kuda, eh, confirm, da, ha, la, as a gentleman, he called. But, in reality, that is, eh, press, eh, da, ha, na, eh, then, no answer, eh, then. But sometimes, a number goes, and number goes, um, the SOOC staff, so, sp, da, ha, na, na, shala, eh, shi, ah, na, da, na, da, na, ya, da, ha, na, kuda. Eh, qu, eh, ki, eh, ah, ah, na, re, eh, da, eh, you confuse the people, entire Navajo Nation, you, da, uh, OOC, da, the, ba, yang, ti, eh, ro, da, min, a, which employer, employee, talking about, where are them, they lo- are located? Ha, shi, na, ha, da, na, is the care fund utilized, the fund, these people? Na, na, bo, shita, eh, da, na, shita, koo, joo, ba, ha, na, eh, da, who hires them? that, oh, so, oh, so, by, that, eh, it, uh, who hired them, how she hired, that, eh, so, uh, I did, eh, but, eh, 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 for immediate release on October, December 10th, on, I, 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 eh, could, eh, eh, could, eh, 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 could, eh, 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 cause you can't inform the Navajo Nation Council, eh, or, they, valid record, such as office, does not have the correct information, which is, uh, I'm, I'm, I don't know, your support center is requesting CIB from applicant, he, the, eh, so, eh, eh, so, oh, by, so, CIB should not even use, he, the, then, they, Black Mesa, Pinyon, yeah, eh, 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 no, I don't, eh, oh, so, eh, 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 we have forty-nine million dollars already there, this should be covered, the first, I, I, she, don't, isn't, eh, 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 if somebody have time, give it to me, my colleague.
Hey. Moving on down, Honorable James, three minutes and forty-four seconds. On reserve time.
Eh, yeah, don't, another speaker, other members of the council, I don't, um, try to control her, Kirk, eh, yeah, could all, should, should, uh, don't, should, uh, uh, call, um, OMB, I showed it, eh, eh, could all, the transfer of the funds, just, I, the amount, wasn't it, the deadline was today, of course, could, and that is, of course, could, and I, that's, eh, me, though, so, OMB, you're listening, please, make, this the transfer a priority into hardship, to give a timeframe for Office of the Controller and our controller to make it known to the public of when, um, the expected timeline would be, um, I, I say this, and with all due respect, that, uh, Controller Kirk has done a wonderful job with the chapters, supply, once OMB had transferred funds into that business unit account, Controller Kirk and the firm and the team, the way I understand, is went and forced it to get that tent up at Winter Rock Fairgrounds, and ordered over three hundred truckloads of supplies for the chapters throughout the Navajo Nation. And this is long, Office of the Control have access and knows the money is in the account, I believe that they can run with issuing all of the hardship checks out. It's just in the matter of all the different, um, bureaucracy that we have within OMB, and then Politic comes in, um, because that's where executive branch will come in, and that's the part that really needs to get out, and the people need to know what actually happens in-house internally, within our own three-branch government. And if OMB can make this a priority, it would be very, very quick process, and to get these checks issued out to our Navajo people. At the same time, I am afraid that a lot of our Navajo families are going to be going out, spending this funds, because the way the timeframe looks is that, right when the two thousand twenty, uh, tax returns, refund come in, the Navajo Nation hardship check is gonna be coming in, on top of that, the federal stimulus, stimulus payment will also be coming in, and they're gonna all get it at the same time, and I'm afraid that we are going to have Navajo families going out and about, um, trying to spend all the funds. Um, fortunately, when it comes to saving, it's hard, but I can just allude to that and tell the Navajo people throughout the nation, throughout the world that are listening, when you get these funds, please save as much as you can, because we don't know how long this virus will go, and, um, I just think and hope that it's not spent within a short timeframe, and next year, towards the end of the year, we'll be talking about hardship again, with our Navajo people lacking funds and so forth. So with that, I'll go ahead and end it here and reserve the rest of my time, thank you.
Every time in thirteen seconds. That, thank you, uh, reserve your time in thirteen seconds, Honorable James, uh, is a response from, uh, Controller's Office, or Department of Justice, or Let's Council on the side.
Um, Speaker, this is Controller.
Yes, Madam Controller, floor is yours.
Okay, uh, eh, yeah, I do, um, um, good evening, that's, eh, I told you, um, so, uh, Navajo Nation Council, I do, um, I don't should, eh, could all, he has a number of questions, um, so, it looks like he was complaining about the one eight three three two eight two seven two four eight number, um, yes, at times, I think, early on, when that's a toll-free number, there were issues, and also, at times, there was issues with the toll-free number, um, so, most of that was provider-related, uh, for example, AT&amp;T sometimes was blocking it, so, uh, if you were trying to dial, it might not work, so, um, but we got that resolved, some of the other issues after that was certain cellphone towers, um, it wasn't allowing the calls to go through, so, uh, so we were working through those issues as well, um, if I did get inquiries regarding that, I've encouraged people to, uh, use other, other phones, um, uh, and also to use landlines, um, to get through, and then also encourage email if possible, um, and so forth, so, um, it wasn't all, eh, perfect, but, um, we tried to work through those issues, um, we did, I do have some statistics, uh, through the course of the, uh, the whole hardship program, we logged, uh, forty thousand calls, that were inbound calls, um, and then we also logged thirty-six, thirty-six thousand emails, um, so, and then also, we did start, we were utilizing technology, the best, uh, uh, the best that we can, um, so, we did also start a texting program, um, so, uh, those are in the tens of thousands of texts that were sent out, most of them, as I mentioned earlier in my report, um, uh, the difference between two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand and a hundred-and-ninety-thousand are exceptions to date, that needs to be worked out, obviously, for audit purposes, we have to verify enrollment, so, um, as I mentioned before, so that is the reason why we have to ask for CIB, uh, keep in mind, again, I will say it, uh, uh, the vital statistics in the census, uh, were not the best records, uh, record-keeping, as well as the database, which is something that came out of left field, so to speak, it even took, um, Vital Record Census Office by surprise, as to their record-keeping, um, so, we had to make adjustments for that, so, when I say we have four hundred and fifty people working on hardship, we really had four hundred and fifty people outsourced working on hardship, so, I do, in terms of people making phone calls, um, early on, when the application period started, et cetera, um, there are a lot of, um, I, I think our one-eight-three-three number was, uh, in the first week, was, uh, there were some wait times, um, et cetera, uh, so, was backed up, so, what we saw was people getting on a OOC website, and they were calling our fraud hotline, they were calling our FMIS support, um, and so forth, and the same thing happened with emails, they were emailing all the emails they could find on our website, so, those things have happened, um, no way around them, other than to deal with it, um, so, I know some staff were not, um, excited about that, um, and so forth, uh, website, our website had a lot of information, um, as well, because obviously, people saw our website, uh, it had high traffic, um, although our website utilizes old technology, we, our website is the only website that had kept for accountability purposes, uh, for the public, uh, we, uh, had, uh, interactive graphs that displayed all the, anything cares related, as far as expenditures and so forth, even though we weren't required to do it, um, but we did it anyways, um, so, um, just kind of some of the comments made about, uh, why there was no information, I feel that there is information, if there's, my staff, my employees are wondering why, uh, I do want to mention that our office sent out press releases to the public, explaining the one-eight-three-three number, the texting program, um, and so forth, as well as our website, so, and, uh, the other thing I just wanted to say, CIB from applicant, from Chicago, I'm not sure what that means, but, um, the only way to verify enrollment is through a CIB, um, in working conjunct- in conjunction with Vital Records, um, so, if we have to ask for a copy from the applicant, we have to do it, that's essentially what we use to match up with, uh, Census Office, uh, paper documents, so that we are able to upload into their database, um, and then, uh, I think the other comment was about making payments with the forty-nine million, um, again, uh, as I explained a couple times this, today, um, it doesn't work that way, um, because the legislation says up to fifteen hundred, up to five hundred, and that number depends on the hardship pot, and way back when the pot only had forty-nine million, uh, um, that wasn't gonna cover a lot, uh, depending on the applicant number, so, those are still moving numbers at that point, there was no way to make a payment based on forty-nine million, especially if our turnout was two-hundred-and-ninety-million, or two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand Navajos, so, those are my responses, um, I think, other than that, uh, uh, should, should Salida get James, uh, uh, thank you for mentioning, um, in, in, uh, our office, uh, just for the record, I just would like to say, uh, we use our twenty-million-dollar budget, we, we use some of that, uh, OOC's budget to fund the, uh, the, the chapters and the DCD, the bulk purchase, uh, we were able to get the tent up, uh, and also, we were able to pay for the logistics team and security, um, from out of our budget, so, and that was all to expedite the, um, the, the bulk purchases for the chapters, so, it is a big endeavor out there, um, it is one thing, uh, that, uh, the Navajo Nation, uh, was able to beat out your Walmarts and your Amazon with its purchasing power, to make a, a bulk purchase, right when the supply chains were, were getting pretty, uh, competitive as far as customers, and so, uh, hopefully, uh, I believe, um, I know one of the chapters might be getting their water today, so, I hope that goes a long ways out in the community as well, so, just wanted to add that response, I do, eh, yeah.
Speaker, question of privilege, this is Delegate Yellowhair. Speaker, this is Delegate Yellowhair, question of privilege.
Oh, shoot, sorry, uh, I was talking to myself there, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Controller, for the, uh, follow-up, and, uh, we can do is go back to the floor, and there's a question on privilege, Honorable Yellowhair?
Uh, that's correct, what the, uh, Controller said about Chicago, the people in Wa- in the, uh, Black Mesa, they said our records is up there in Ch- Chicago, Chicago, like, CIB information, the, the, all their records are confidentially, they're up there in Chicago, but that's a concern for people, why they say, why our records over in, been sent to Chicago, by consultant or whoever, that, that's my, uh, must, my, uh, uh, to correction on Controller, eh, 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 thank you, Speaker, yeah.
Okay. That, colleagues, I don't have anybody else on the board, you have reserve time, though. That, excellent, uh, reserve time, Honorable James, thirteen seconds.
Thank you, Speaker, member of the council, OMB, please make hardship transfer a priority for OOC, our Navajo people are behind on bills, please, OMB, thank you, God bless you all.
Hey, uh, Honorable James, uh, next on the agenda is a report from OMB, probably asked some questions there at that time, too, as well. That.
Okay.
There's no other comments, questions, colleagues, or anybody else with the reserve time, one once, one twice, one three times, third board, accept the report.
Honorable Elmer Begay.
Question of privilege, Speaker.
Question of privilege, while we're voting, Madam Chair Charles Newton.
Speaker, yes, I apologize, I didn't know that I was on, um, mute, so by the time I did the star six, um, you had already called for the, uh, for the, uh, vote, uh, my, my, excuse me, my question is, um, uh, Controller provided a lot of information to this body today, uh, namely, a lot of the assumptions, um, that were, uh, shared with us, with the, all of the moving parts that are happening right now, with the number of, um, applications that are going, coming in, as well as the number of applications that are currently having issues, um, how much is, um, in the pot right now, versus how much, um, OMB has to, um, move into the pot, um, so, my question, um, to the Controller is, uh, first, I'm gonna say, Madam Controller, thank you for all the work that you have been doing, um, a- and it sounds like i- it was a tremendous amount of work, um, and a lot of, um, moving parts as well, but also, uh, the help that you, um, that you brought in to try to assist the Navajo people, and it wasn't a smooth, um, it wasn't a smooth process, but we appreciate everything that you have done for, uh, the Navajo people thus far, but I just wanna ask, um, Madam Controller, um, are you going to issue a press release with the information that you provided to council today, so that it could be shared with the people, I know that you have been providing information on your website, you have been sharing the press releases, uh, but if there's something that we could share with the Navajo people, uh, with what has, what we have discussed today, and again, with all of the assumptions that were being made, um, I think if we could clarify all of that, that would be great, so that's my question to the Controller, thank you, Speaker.
Hey, question of privilege, is there gonna be a press release, Madam Controller?
Um, um, uh, this is Controller, um, I do, eh, yeah, um, should, eh, um, uh, regarding a press release, uh, I think it would be, uh, a good time if we work through the numbers in the next day, I'm, I'm thinking day or two, uh, at the latest, uh, I really would like to get the numbers that are flowing through to the hardship captured and fleshed out, so, um, because we have a deadline today, and we're working through the, the obligating, um, uh, those encumbrances, and so, I'm hoping we get that done right away, and with those numbers, I would like to do a press release on that, um, because at least that's one number that we, you know, uh, is solidified, um, and so, uh, definitely, um, we did do a press release on December twenty-third regarding the exceptions, um, working through those exceptions, um, and just for clarification, while I have the floor, um, there are no records in Chicago, um, uh, there are records maintained in the portal, and the portal belongs to the Navajo Nation, and as I answered earlier questions, it is secured, we use industry standards to secure the portal, um, any other physical documentation regarding hardship, they're housed in, uh, either in Windarock or Gallup, so, just wanted to make that clarification as well, um, but yes, uh, definitely, press releases to come, eh, I do, eh, yeah.
Speaker, this is Delegate, so, I have a point of privilege.
That, while we're voting, point of privilege, Honorable Charlene So.
Uh, Chanelle, uh, speaking, I have a question, uh, this was just now posed, um, is there an option to withdraw from the hardship, I know that there were a few folks that wanted to rescind their application to provide for others, yeah.
Madam Controller.
Um, oh, I do, eh, yeah, um, in regards to, um, Chanelle, your question, um, yes, absolutely, um, which I think it's great, um, if people want to do that, um, again, uh, they would just call the one-eight-three-three-two-eight-two-seven-two-four-eight number, or to email the N N cares help at N N O O C dot O R G, and, and put that in writing, or, uh, make a phone call, and that will work, oh, I, eh, yeah.
Madam Controller, maybe if you could, uh, put that in the press release, too, as well, in the press release, suggestion, okay, we're voting.
Honorable Elmer Begay. Honorable Key Ellen Begay Junior.
Delegate Key Ellen votes green, thank you.
Honorable Key Ellen Begay Junior votes green, Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green, Honorable Eugene Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugene Charles Newton votes green, Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior.
I vote green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior votes green, Honorable Mark Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes green, Honorable Pernell Holona.
Honorable, Honorable Green.
Honorable Pernell Holona votes green, Honorable Jamie Hanyo. Honorable Vince James.
Uh, Delegate Jane votes green, thank you.
Honorable Vince James votes green, Honorable Rick Nez.
Delegate Rick Nez votes green.
Honorable Rick Nez votes green, Honorable Carl Slater. Honorable Raymond Smith Junior.
Red.
Honorable Raymond Smith Junior votes red, Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior votes green, Honorable Otto So. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green, Honorable Daniel So.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green, Honorable Eugene So.
Vote So.
Honorable Eugene So votes green, Honorable Thomas Walker Junior. Honorable Edison Oneika. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Honorable Red.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes red, Honorable Elmer Begay. Honorable Elmer Begay votes green via text, Honorable Paul Begay, Honorable Paul Begay votes green via text, Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Jamie Hanyo.
Uh, pardon me, this is Delegate Cardi, I voted green.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi votes green.
Thank you.
Honorable Jamie Hanyo. Honorable Jamie Hanyo.
Hanyo votes green.
Honorable Jamie Hanyo votes green. Honorable Carl Slater. Honorable Carl Slater votes green via text. Honorable Otto So.
Hello, green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr.
Walker votes green.
Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. votes green. Honorable Edison Wuneka.
Green.
Honorable Edison Wuneka votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Speaker with a vote of 20 yays, 2 nays, and Speaker not voting.
Bobby, did you get me?
Got you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, with that, 20 in favor, 2 opposed. Speaking of not vote, that colleagues, time now is 6:24 PM. We are on report, item number C, update report from Office of Management and Budget on the encumbrances into the hardship expenditure plan for the expenditure plans for Navajo Nation Council resolutions. That is OMB on the line. Colleagues, I know OMB was on the line. They were on the line, they did email, said they were on the line throughout the day, and they stated that they weren't sure if they were going to be on this evening due to the fact that they worked. They what? They had to, they worked out of the Navajo Nation Museum, and they had to leave out of the Navajo Nation Museum by 5:40. But they did send a written report, and that written report was sent out. I do believe in that written report, Mr. Dominic Beall indicated that it's what, 200? I don't know how much. Sir Dominic Beall has indicated that there's 254,964,179 dollars that's been moved over. Mr. Beall, anybody from OMB? Once. When twice. OMB. Office of Management and Budget. It's none, nobody.
Speaker.
Honorable Otto So.
Can we issue out a subpoena? Even though OMB has to be out of the building by 5, but they should be able to be on the phone. We pay this man above and beyond. And as our manager, he should be able to provide us a report. I would motion to go ahead and proceed with the subpoena. Thank you.
Honorable Honorable Otto So, in that recognition, recognizing you to speak, the I guess I would have to work together with Ms. Barbara, Speaker's Officer, to work together with Ms. Barbara to go ahead and refer to that, refer in that direction. Ms. Barbara? And that's something we probably have to work on in order for us to execute that. Need some time.
Thank you, thank you, Speaker. The Navajo Nation Code does allow, does have a provision for subpoenaing persons who do not, who need to come report in front of council or provide documents. It appears Mr. Beall did provide documents, but you want his presence. So yeah, theoretically, we can subpoena him. He will be able to protest that subpoena if he so chooses. So as I have repeatedly requested of the council is to provide notice to the person that they are to present. So I will need to track down that notice, and that notice needs to give them the opportunity to, in these times, to get into a place to be on telecommunications. So once we develop documents, we can look at subpoenas. The one thing I would request is, has anybody actually phoned Mr. Beall and asked him to get on the line? It appears from his email that he had to leave the office a little before 6:00. Thank you, Speaker.
I think that's the number one issue, Ms. Barbara, he doesn't have a phone.
Ah, okay. Well, when we get, if you will send me the documents and such of your notice to him, I will, we'll take a look at the subpoenas tomorrow.
Okay, and then
They cannot be done, they cannot be done tonight.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not possible. Thank you.
We'll forward you the contact and information through email that Chief of Staff sent to Mr. Beall earlier today and the rest of OMB. Second, once that's ready to go, we'll need a date and time too before we need to go ahead and work together with Legis council on providing the, when this date, or when this notice will happen and when the meeting will happen too as well. Honorable Otto So. Okay, with that, colleagues. Since there's no item C, moving on down, five old business. There are none, six new business. Question of privilege? I'm Chair Charles Newton.
Yeah, Speaker, I'm sorry, I'm looking through my email, the report that you're referencing right now, is that the one page? Like, I mean, it's not really even a report, it's more or less a breakdown of funding. I believe, I mean, I'm not sure if that's what you are referencing. Am I looking at this wrong?
That's, that's
B R U S T cares 1228.
That's what was provided by OMB, Madam Chair.
Okay, Speaker, so just for the record, it's not, it's not a report. And for the people who are listening on, asking about this report, it's not a report, it's just an expenditure report, and it looks like it's the same information that the Controller went over, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, that, thank you, Madam Chair. New business, item number 6A, legislation 0316-20. Sponsored by Honorable Eugene So, co-sponsored by myself, Seth Damon. Mr. Rico, if you could read that into the record.
Mr. Speaker, members of the 24th Navajo Nation Council, legislative tracking number 0316-20 in action relating to an emergency for the Navajo Nation Council moving some money from the unreserved undesignated fund balance in a total amount of $2,500,000 to the Office of Navajo Nation Scholarship and Financial Aid, waiving 12 NNC Section 820 EFNG of the Appropriations Act. This is sponsored by Honorable So, co-sponsored by Honorable Seth Damon. Counsel is final authority, Navajo Nation Council rules of order rule 999 has been ready. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion, Daniel So.
Chairman Daniel So, second.
Second, Halona.
Honorable Halona. Comments, questions? At once.
Chairman Hanyo.
Chairman Hanyo. That, Honorable Eugene So, floors yours, 20 minutes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hot question. These are called regards to pursue to the Mr. Bart Stevens declineation, the money for funds scholarship. Even now, we'd like to keep the kids going. There's a lot of scholarship already out there, and kids are still going to school, and there are some graduates that can go forward again. But we need to keep them going, so we need to find some money somewhere. So this is the only option that we could find. So I sponsored this legislation to help our younger generation to keep on going with their education. I don't know if they can get behind. I don't care, I don't know what they saw. I don't know if it could solve, but even now, we're trying to push this ahead. Maybe they will put some money down later on, maybe not, but right now at this time. I see, I'd say we want us to keep them going, even now, the legislation to put it forward to you guys. To get them more education. So it's your, it's in your discretion, it's your vote. I would really like you to go forward with this, with your green vote, and let's help our younger generation. I know there's a lot of discussion that on it, but we have to keep going. Let them, let them educate themselves. Ahead, my agent is Rose Graham. She's got something that she might present to you. Rose, are you out there? Speaker, I give my time right here.
Hello. Gade.
Oh, Gade, my friend.
Gade, Mr. Speaker. I don't know, the Navajo Nation Council. And just a few words I would like to say is that the Navajo Nation Scholarship Office is funded by federal grant, the majority of the funds are federal grants, personnel and operations. January to December is, that's the way the funds are authorized. And I don't, they come in, whereas the Navajo Nation general funds, it's October to September. Every year, the federal government does not we don't always have our money up front in January. And this time of the year, we ask the Controller for an advance so we can finish our spring awards. And that's what we're asking for right now. We sent a request to the Controller, asking for an advance. The BIA declined our annual funding agreement. And so in anticipation of the funds coming in, because by now, the annual funding agreement is usually signed and in place. The annual funding agreement is declined. Even though the funds are authorized, it's approved by Congress, and the BIA is saying that they haven't get the money from the Department of Interior yet. So we can't sign, we can't, so we have to decline the annual funding agreement. So that's what we're waiting for. And that's not in place. So that's why we're asking for an appropriation of $2.5 million. And the OMB Director sent you a memo saying that there are funds available, but he's going based on the resolution that was approved beginning of the Navajo Nation fiscal year. We have the latest, the latest quarterly budget report. We have $13 million available for scholarship. Every time we get a budget, we split it in half for fall term and spring term. Budget and daily. So the federal grant funds, majority of our students are need-based, need-based students. And so that's who we need the money for. And that's the majority of our full-time, need-based students. There's a lot of money in all those different categories, it looks like a lot of money. But those are for part-time vocational graduate undergraduate you know, like graduate trust fund, donation account, teacher education, and those are all different categories. They are very specific. Where we need the most, where we need the most money and where we spend the most money is our full-time undergraduate students, need-based students. That's where we need the funding. Oh, yeah. The resolution before you. Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Did you hear that? Okay.
Does that conclude your presentation, Honorable Eugene So?
Oh, for now, yeah.
Okay, with that. We have a motion, we have a second. I'm going to go to the board. Chairman Hanyo, floors yours.
I should get a letter to the Speaker Damon, 24th Navajo Nation Council. DA 316, 20. uh, DA, uh, three sixteen, uh, I, twenty, one minute, and there is an amendment that was provided by, um, Office of Legislative Council, eh, so, for discussion purposes, I lay motion to, uh, amendment number one, um, and if they could, I know I can read this into the records, the Speaker Damon, uh, reserve my time.
Uh, thank you, is that the, uh, this is the one, um, adding on the OC memo and the OMB memo, correct?
Oh, yes, and then there's some recommended changes in the language also.
Okay.
Mr. Speaker, members of the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, amendment number one, one, page three, lines twenty-four to twenty-seven, delete existing paragraph F and insert new paragraph F as follows. Overstrike F, due to the emergency nature of this legislation, the Office of Management and Budget has yet to provide a review required pursuant to twelve NNC eight twenty M. The Office of Management and Budget can provide its review when the matter is heard before the Navajo Nation Council, and overstrike underscore new F, the Office of Management and Budget, OMB, has provided a memorandum as required by twelve NNC eight twenty M, which is attached as exhibit E, and underscore, two, add the memo from Dominic Bell dated the December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, as new exhibit E. Three, page three, lines twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and page four, lines one, two, delete existing paragraph G and insert new paragraph G as follows, overstrike G, due to the emergency nature of this legislation, the Office of the Controller has yet to provide the information required pursuant to twelve NNC eight twenty L, the Controller can provide this information when the matter is heard before the Navajo Nation Council, and overstrike underscore G, the Office of the Controller has provided a memorandum as required by twelve NNC eight twenty L, which is attached as exhibit F, as a result of this, as a result of the Controller's determination that the ONNSFA scholarship causes are recurring, waiver language is included in section three of this resolution, and underscore. Four, add the memo from Purling, current dated December twenty-third, twenty twenty, as new exhibit F. Five, renumber reletter succeeding paragraph, sections, and exhibits accordingly if necessary, this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in any other committee amendment which shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Services with notice to the sponsor of the legislation is hereby authorized to make necessary grammatical changes. Included with this amendment are the, uh, documents noted within the amendment, a new exhibit E, and a new exhibit F. Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, with that, the motion by Chairman Hino on amendment one.
Second, hello.
And colleagues, this was sent out at, uh, six thirty-eight PM by Ms. Lowell, Office Legislative Council. Second, my honorable Halona, that, colleagues, any comments, questions on amendment one?
Speaker.
Yes.
Speaker. Can you hear me?
Yes. Chairman Yadi, is that you?
Yes, sir. Hey, um, just real quick comment, um, on the amendment, um, and to the, the legislation, well, basically on the amendment, the RD's on the line, okay, so, if we, um, can give him some time to speak, sir, um, BIA, um, Chief Director, Speaker, so.
Thank you, Chairman Yadi. That, colleagues, any comments, questions on amendment one? One.
Vice Chair Smith, uh, Speaker.
Twice.
Speaker, Vice Chair Smith.
Vice Chair Smith, go ahead, on the amendment.
Yes, sir, on the amendment, thank you, uh, Speaker, thank you, uh, motioning parties on the amendment, uh, Chair Hino and also, uh, Delegate Halona, and the, uh, members of the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council. In the, uh, exhibit, I'm reading OMB's exhibit, and in there, it's, uh, maybe the, uh, motioning parties for the, uh, amendment could also include this language in there, under number three, um.
There's no reimbursement.
Call for replenishment of the UUFB when federal funds are received, I understand that the, uh, report this morning was, um, from, um, Missanti, that, uh, Department of Interior received, uh, a lot of money, so I'm sure that there is monies in there, uh, could that language be put in there, uh, for this, uh, reason? I reserve my time, thank you.
That, four minutes and five seconds. Moving on down. Any of the comments, questions? If not, we'll go back to the sponsor. Honorable Eugene So, oh, no, 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 Chairman Hino, on the amendment one.
Kashina, thank you for that, uh, so, so, Speaker Damon, Ashna, Vice Chair Smith, um, on their request again, is that, um, uh, um, to modify my amendment again, to include the, um, language, I, um, am open to it, but I guess we need to get clarification from either OLC or, uh, the Controller or OMB, to see if that language will be sufficient or allowable, uh, for reimbursement, if, um, another pot of money is made available, so, eh, uh, we could go to defer to the, um, the experts, Speaker Damon, and then I'll make that, uh, consideration.
That, Ms. Barbara? Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Speaker, um, I'm sending out a, uh, actually a separate amendment on that same, uh, uh, same subject, so, and it will be there in two, two, two seconds, so if you wanted to combine the two, that would be fine, thank you.
Thank you. So we can wait, I guess, unless, if you'd like to move forth, you're, you're holding the motion, Chairman Hino, would you just like to do this amendment first, and then somebody can, or whoever requested that other amendment can, uh, poise that as a second amendment?
So, Speaker Damon, I believe, um, there was a request from, um, Delegate Yalsey, um, Chairman Yalsey, uh, to see if we could allow BIA to, um, kind of speak on the subject too, regarding the dispersment of the, um, scholarship funds, that would give us a little bit of time?
Um, thank you, uh, um, Honorable Chairman, uh, Hino, uh, reason why to go to, uh, Mr. Stevens was because, uh, there was no direct question to Mr. Stevens, and, uh, secondly, um, there was no, uh, uh, on what, uh, Eugene So didn't, uh, state that Mr. Stevens was a, um, agent of his.
Kashina, get a lot, so there, uh, Speaker Damon, so that, uh.
Unless you have a question for him, I can refer to him now.
Oh, no, no, um, uh, the, uh, modified amendment that is requested by Vice Chair Smith, uh, is available on email now, and I'll, um, I'll modify my amendment to include this language also.
Okay. Rico, or, on the reading.
Speaker, I got a question, auto so.
Was sent out. Yeah. Honorable Auto So, I can put you in the queue.
Mr. Speaker, members of the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, modification to amendment number one is to include, on page four, line twenty-two, add new paragraph as follows, new paragraph C underscore, the Office of Navajo Nation Scholarship and Financial Aid, OMB Contracts and Grant Section. An Office of the Controller shall reimburse and replenish the unreserved, undesigned fund balance in the amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars when funds are provided by the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Two, renumber reletter succeeding paragraph, sections, and exhibits accordingly if necessary, this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in any other committee amendment which shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment, the Office of Legislative Services with notice to the sponsor of the legislation is hereby authorized to make serious grammatical changes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. With that, Honorable Chairman Hino requesting modifies granted, uh, with that, the second, Honorable Halona, you good?
I'm dealing with that, thank you.
Okay, with that, on amendment one, Honorable Auto So, floors yours.
Yes, thank you very much, Speaker, I don't, the members of the Navajo Nation Council, and, uh, Chairman Hino, the amendment, I don't, uh, Kashina, Eugene So, for bringing this legislation forth, um, with the amendment that's being proposed, um, requesting for those, to those, for those dollars to be replenished by the federal government, um, is it, uh, within the confines of the federal government to, to allow that transaction to happen, as they say, if the federal government does get the funding allocation granted, and we hear DOI has got some, uh, DOI and, uh, BIE, and, uh, or, or DOI and, uh, BIA got some money, and it is, is it within the policies that the Bureau of Indian Affairs will allow that to, to happen, as they, uh, allow the transaction to, to be transferred over to the nation? And, uh, that's, that's just one area, I don't want to get into a, uh, sort of a legal fight with them, saying you can't do that, the other is that, uh, since we got that letter, uh, from Department of, uh, from, from BIA, from our trustee, saying, oh, we have an, a funding agreement, but we have no money, we cannot give you any money, and, uh, yes, um, this is the trust responsibility, and with Department, I hope Department of Justice is on the line, is this something that we could start to look at, to try to, uh, pursue some legal action against the Bureau of Indian Affairs related to their trust obligation to the Navajo people, and then, and, and, and at this time, it's related to, uh, scholarships, so that's just one of my thoughts, um, I, I, I saw Mr. Stevens' letter, and, uh, I, uh, it was a really nice letter to the Navajo Nation, but saying Navajo Nation, you know, yeah, I owe you some, uh, uh, here's, we are obligated to fund you guys, but I'm not giving you money right now, this is the trust responsibility, and with that, we have something that we have, uh, from Department of Justice to answer, to see if we could start looking at, is some sort of legal, um, avenues to, uh, get funding here, here, to this program, because we shouldn't be doing this, as the Bureau of Indian Affairs has obligated monies for scholarships, we're bailing out the Bureau of Indian Affairs now, call, oh, reserve my time.
Every time at two minutes and forty-six seconds. That. We go back to, uh, I guess there was a question directly to Department of Justice. Department of Justice?
Mr. Speaker, this is Mel.
Yes.
Good evening, Mel. Good evening, sir, I wasn't sure if, um, if there was another DOJ attorney on the line, um, in response to Honorable So, um, I can raise that concern with the Attorney General, the Deputy AP, uh, and, and raise your suggestion of looking into possible action against BIA for, um, violating its trust responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That. Mr. Stevens? Um, BIA, are you on the line?
Can you hear me, Speaker?
I can hear you, good evening, Mr. Stevens.
Good evening, how are you?
Good. Floors yours, if you want to respond.
Sure, um, uh, some of the facts that have been stated are fairly accurate, indeed, there was a, a letter regarding the annual funding agreement that I signed off on, that, um, went into a little bit more detail than what's been discussed here about, um, funding and how appropriations work, and how money rolls down, um, and the BIA's role in that. Um, later last week, I believe it was, um, the Office of the President and Vice President actually had me on a call asking similar questions, of which Ms. Graham was on as well, and others, OMB and others, um, I had my ISD people, Indian Self-Determination people, who are the awarding officials for money that rolls from the government to the Navajo Nation, and we provided very detailed information on why we're in this situation that we're in, it's not the Bureau of Indian Affairs refusing to give any money, and I went into a lot of detail with why it is the way it is, um, for those of you that don't understand the process, the, the first thing needs to be understood is that this money flows from congressionally appropriated dollars to the department, I heard that referenced, and that is correct, large amounts roll down, but just to say that because money rolled down, and somebody read about it, and a large amount, doesn't mean it all trickles down into the right line items of the budget that need funding, or that, that are waiting for funding, which. But just to say that because money rolled down and somebody read about a large amount doesn't mean it all trickles down into the right line items of the budget that need funding or that, that are waiting for funding, which virtually every federal program is at this point, including the BIA itself. Another part that needs to be understood is these monies do not come to the BIA. Scholarship funding goes to the BIE. The BIE has their budget process that Deputy Bureau Director of School Operations, Ms. Pinto, is in charge of enrolling out those monies and transferring them to the BIA. And once they land in our coffers through Indian Affairs budget, only then are we able to disperse those funds. We are bound by the Anti-Deficiency Act, which basically says that no federal employee can commit the government for something it doesn't have. And that's exactly where the regional office and the Bureau of Indian Affairs, quite frankly, is at at this point. We do not have money in our bank account, so to speak, to cut you guys a check that will bounce. It won't bounce, but that's the theory behind it. That's the Anti-Deficiency Act, which says that we cannot commit the government for resources or award funds that we don't have. And that's exactly where we're at right now. And that's why the letter that I signed says that. It goes into a lot more detail regarding the funding agreement. And we've had conversations, like I said, last week with Mr. Shorty, Ms. Graham, President Ned was on the call and other leaders were on the call, talking about this very issue. I actually got a text this morning wanting an update from Mr. Ned because of this legislation moving forward. And still, we have not seen the money hit our coffers. So until, and I'm glad DOJ is on the call, so until that money or resources fall into our account, we can't make awards. Because then we're in violation of the Anti-Deficiency Act. We could get that employee that does that disciplined, removed. There's pretty severe penalties aligned with violating that Anti-Deficiency Act and committing to the, committing the government to cover resources that we don't have. And again, I want to clarify the reference that was made that somewhere it was read or understood that the Department of Interior received congressional appropriations, and they may have. But it has not trickled down into the specific line items through the budget process from the department to Indian Affairs, to BIE, to us. So that's where we're at with this. We, we would love to be able to fund. We understand the importance of keeping these kids in school. We understand the need. Believe me, we, a lot of us, we're recipients of such scholarships and we know how dependent students are on receiving these funds. And it's not something that we're just going to sit at the region and say, we're just going to deprive money. No, absolutely not. We can award what we have, and right now, we don't have anything to award. So therefore, I guess that's why this legislation is bringing forth, because I explained this to Ms. Graham, Mr. Shorty and others, explaining the Anti-Deficiency Act, explaining I can't give you what I don't have. In a nutshell, you know, I can't write a check that I can't cover, which is essentially kind of the theory behind it. And thus, this legislation is moving forward to, as delegate So says, bail out the BIA, which could or could not be true, however you want to handle that. But eventually, the money will hit. The money will go to higher ed. Because we have a commitment to do that. There's a 93638 program, but, but we just can't give you what we don't have in our coffers right now. So that, that's my, um, my report out, my response to some of the conversations that's been happening. And if there's any questions, any need for additional clarification, we don't know yet. We got an email from BIE. Again, I reached out to them as well. This morning, wanting to more, know more details. And BIE came back and says that the money is moving forward and that it's within Indian Affairs budget, but it has not rolled down to the region. So it's closed. We hope it's closed or getting closer, that we'll see these in our coffers and we'll be able to make the award and approve the annual funding agreement and, and award these dollars. But until then, we cannot without being in violation of the federal law. Thank you.
Thank you. Stevens. That colleagues, I don't have anybody else on the board on amendment one.
This is Delegate Charles Newton with a question of privilege.
Question of privilege. I'm chair.
Thank you, Speaker and colleagues. My question of privilege is for Mr. Stevens. Thank you, Mr. Stevens, for giving us that information. So I guess my straightforward question is, if this is approved tonight and on the 10th day, because it takes the President about 10 days to sign these legislations. So on the 10th day, the President signs this legislation, can you accept or can BIE accept these funds to give to the Navajo students? Thank you.
Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. Just getting used to this different process of I'm muting myself. I apologize if I'm a little delayed. You are correct that the President did sign earlier today, I believe, the, the additional resources to roll out and, which included funding the government to avoid a shutdown. We know that that's happening. This money, as I think Ms. Graham spoke to, was typically held already by the department and isn't, is yes, going to be included in a part of that, but some of it is not. But nonetheless, the bottom line or the answer to your question is, is that it still has to follow that budget process. As I referenced before, going from the department, going to BIE, going to IA budget, coming to BIA, and then we make the award. So the answer is basing it on the President's signature and what we're hearing on the news and just saying, okay, I can award money. That's not allowable. That's still a violation of anti-deficiency because it's not actually in our coffers, in our bank account, so to speak, that we see in the federal finance system, which everything is done electronically, digitally. The monies hit our federal finance system. And then in that same federal finance system, it's awarded to the Navajo Nation where they're able to go in to ASAP and, and draw it down. And that's how that works. And that, that, and then for me, just to say, yeah, award the money, I can't because it hasn't hit our system. That's another reason for the mechanism of how the money rolls down from the department.
Speaker, this is Delegate Charles Newton.
I'm Chair Charles Newton. Floor is yours. On amendment one.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Speaker. So based on the information that Mr. Stevens is giving us as a council, would I, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit worried that on our end, we see this money going to our Navajo students to support them through, as was provided to us by Ms. Graham, to support them through the spring session, I mean, through the spring course. But it sounds like not all of that money that we award, if it does go through the process, is going to go to the students. As Mr. Stevens indicated, it goes, it rolls down. So I'm wondering exactly if we did the 2.5 million and we, we voted on this today, how much of that would actually be going to students? Thank you. I reserve the rest of my time.
Mr. Speaker, this is Rose Graham. May I answer that?
Thank you. That. Which, ma'am chair. The, uh, go back to the sponsor, Chairman Hainio.
Okay, again, thanks to the Speaker Damon and also the response from Mr. Stevens with the BIA and the question that was posed by, uh, Mr. Natah. They'll get Eugene Charles Newton. Hey, I'll defer that to Ms. Rose Graham. I believe she has the response to that question.
Thank you. Ms. Graham?
Yes, please. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Members of the, the council and Delegate Newton. The funds that is before the council, the proposed budget is entirely for scholarship. So all that money will go to the scholarship. And what would happen is upon approval, OMB would post it in our business unit, the business unit that's in the proposed budget there. And then from there, then we put them by agency aid codes. We have five agency offices. And that's how we would distribute the money. What Mr. Stevens is talking about is the federal budget process. Since this is Navajo Nation general funds, OMB would post it. And then we would get it out to the students. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Graham. Thank you. That colleagues, I don't have anybody else on the board on amendment one. We go back to reserve time. Honorable Vice Chair Smith, four minutes, five seconds.
Well, thank you, Speaker, on amendment one. I understand the parameters and what's going on with the contracts. But this language here is just basically saying, see, that the Navajo Scholarship and Financial Aid, OMB Contracts and Grant Section, an Office of the Controller shall reimburse and replenish the UUFB in the amount of $2,500,000 when funds are provided. Not ordering BIA to order to pay us now, but when funds are provided through that, I guess, that gateway or that mechanism of getting funds to Bureau, Bureau of Indian Affairs. So when that's available, then that language would kick in. But we're not, um, by any ways trying to twist BIA's arm to get that 2.5 right now at this point in time. And that's just pursuant to OMB's letter so that we could utilize the UUFB. Right, right now, we're just using the UUFB to help our students. Yes, education is important. Education is needed. So at that offset, we could use the UUFB 2.5 with the note of knowing that when BIA gets this funding, we could replenish the UUFB and use it for other means for the, for the Navajo Nation. Hey, David, yeah, I reserve my time if I, if I need it.
That, serve your time at two minutes and 30 seconds. Moving on down, Honorable Otto So, two minutes and 46 seconds.
Thank, thank you very much, Speaker. You guys hear me? Do you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Well, um, I appreciate the response from the Bureau of Indian Affairs, from our Director Stevens. And, um, whether it's the Bureau of Indian Affairs or Bureau of Education, they're all under the Bureau of Indian Affairs at one point in time, and Navajo refers to them to BIA. BIA has always governed Indian country, has always put, put Indian in the, Indian tribes in the predicament to say, I'll give you funding when I say so. It's basically what it is. But at this time, this funding is, is tied to an agreement. Whether it's because of Congress. And you're, we, the Navajo Nation, we're a treaty tribe. We gave up a lot. In return, certain things, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, the United States Government told us to be good Indians. We're all being good Indians now. And at this time, with, with the predicament that, that these, these dollars, the education dollars are in, we shouldn't be here. These dollars should be coming down the pipeline, whether it's through a 638 contract or through a funding agreement, because the federal government agreed to these funding terms. And that's all of my point I'm making. There's single parents out there trying to get their, their children through school. I got a few calls. I don't know how I'm going to take care of the spring semester. I know how it feels to have a college student. I have a son who is a senior at a university. And I know how much it costs when there's no scholarship. $7,670 that I paid for a semester. There's families out there that have different situation at their homes. And that's what we're trying to look out for. And I really hope that the oversight has to have a conversation with the Department of Justice in looking at legal action pertaining to what happens at this time when Congress decides not to fund it. Because I remember we came across some in the same scenario with Navajo Head Start. The Navajo Nation had to take Head Start, the National Head Start Program to the courts to get our fair funding, which was fully obligated for our Indian children here on Navajo. Even now, I, I just, I don't, I'm, I'm not speaking with hatreds or anything. The Indian, the Indian children across the country, the Indian people across the country gave up a lot. As a tribal leader today, I certainly want to say that. I want to make sure that the, the federal government holds up to their trust responsibility to what they promised to the, the Indian people many years ago. And in this case, the Navajo people. We have children out in Albuquerque, Flagstaff, Las Cruces, ASU, U of A, going to school in Salt Lake, Denver, across the country. Trying to look forward to how we're going to pay for their education. This is one avenue that helps them a lot. We appreciate the funds. But remember, this is a treaty tribe. We're not a 280 tribe. We are a treaty tribe and we deserve the fair and utmost negotiation and communication from our trustee. Oh, what Abaha, that's all I'm going to have to say right now. And again, thank you very much, Speaker. I waive my time.
Thank you. So, your time. One more time. Moving on down, Madam Chair Charles Newton, four minutes, six seconds.
Yes, Speaker, thank you. And Ms. Graham, thank you for clarifying that information. I guess I may have gotten a little bit confused there, but it's always good to ask questions in the event that you're confused and you cleared that up for me. And regards to the amendment that has been provided to us, I, I don't really have any questions, but I do want to say thank you to the Navajo Nation Scholarship Office. I was funded my last two years of getting my master's degree. Those were the, and then I'll also during my doctoral program as well. So I want to say thank you very much for everything and for those students who are listening out there. I really hope that this money does come in hand for, for you and especially the. and especially those students who are parents, non-traditional students. Keep doing what you're doing, work through it. And I'm happy to support this amendment and this legislation. Thank you. I waive the rest of my time, Speaker.
Thank you.
Hello, Speaker?
With that, let me go back to Chairman Hino regarding the question posed by Honorable Vice Chair Smith.
Can you hear that? Ashenanda, speaking, please. Questions posed by Vice Chair Smith. And with that question, I leave. Would you have Ms. Rose Graham, if she's able to help us with that answer, Speaker?
Thank you. Honorable Hino, Chairman Hino. We go to Ms. Graham. For yours, Ms. Graham.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, Delegate Hino and members of the council.
Uh, may I? Ask him. Sorry, Ms. Graham was trying to prepare for the report.
Okay.
That was my fault. Sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, so go ahead.
Speaker Damon, this is Vice Chair Smith. I didn't have a question at all. I was just making a statement on Item C of the amendment. Thank you.
Okay. That, Ms. Graham, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, let me move on down. Honorable Kian Begay.
Chairman, um, shuma, kodo. I guess one thing that, um, bhaanai dish keshigi, um, jodi, the bhaanu zonai based on that, actually, not that, shonkita. I don't believe B I A is saying that they're not gonna receive the funding or allocate the funding. It's just a matter of the process to get it done. It's normal, just like our own Navajo Nation appropriation. Esso, gahui, eko ko. Ado, president, signi, it takes days for O M B to get things done into their account and trickle it down to chapters and programs. So, ashin ho ho, and that's it. Jokun no, guy, beget, mission, that's there. But, oh, tindes, shuma, kodo, Ms. Graham. I know some schools do, 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 um, accept. Maybe, maybe if it's to the extreme where the student or the B I A has gone into a month out and saying that there's no funding. No, I mean, this type of legislation would be more appropriate. Okoko, the tronla dat, base, ajo ni, aginda, fiscal year, 2021, that's gonna be, it's born in Navajo Nation, Washington, off, see, nishna, hana. Eh, kada, da na, sandi, eh, da na, be launzle, tronkito, ne. Okoko, eh, shinkta, to, base, on, dinniki, she, eh, bit, na, zeliki, eh, shinkta, ah, that, the, ne, zde. Oko, within those situation, is the office, has the office. For those of us that have gone to school, we know that they allow for students to take classes knowing that the fundings will be coming forth. Okoko, the kri, the shink, shisha, getting, knowing that the military was gonna pay for this scholarship and anything as such, according to finance office. Oko, be, you get registered or you still stay in the dorms, and that. I would, eh, go, go, I think majority of the students are at Dene College or ASU, U of A, U N M, and stuff like that. Unless a finance office from the school where they're going to school at is saying that, no, we want money upfront, da, no. Jokun, I, shinkta, ho, da, di, da. Because I think that there's a time where we really need to start working directly with these universities and schools, even our own Dene College, if not, uh, uh, they'll get into you to know and understand funding will be coming forth, but at certain time. But the students shouldn't be penalized for starting a class. So, oh, eh, go, go, kodo, be, 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 shada, di, ah, kita, shinkta, maybe the Health Committee, da. But, oh, atay, la, shi, be, shada, this. Oh, yeah, Navajo Nation for sure will be paying, quite, eh, keh. There's no need for the students or Navajo student going to this particular school that they don't have to have a break or have, not go to class just because the funding hasn't been paid for. Oh, eh, da, na, so, seki, de, da, shi, be, shada, this, ah, go, go. That way, our students don't need to worry. And they're ready to register for class and then they're ready to go back to school. So, oh, shi, da, zde, shato, be, eska, o, che, to, mhaashe, be, beka, ne, cha, shi, bo, ne, cha, on, shis, na, a, cha. Oh, eh, go, da, shinkta, uh, orta, ta, ndinniki, be, shada, di, ah, to, be, shada, da, this, ah, go, eh, bhaanu zon. Um, scholarship, we key, once the fundings are available, funding will be distributed. Some type of commitment letter, da, be, chota, na, go, go. These are finance office at these different schools. So, eh, eh, yeah, oko, do, ah, da, shi, recommend, shada, da, this, and, honest, ndinniki. But nonetheless, I don't have a problem supporting and approving this legislation, Speaker.
Okay, thank you. That, moving on down. Back to reserve time. Vice Chair Smith, two minutes, 30 seconds. On Amendment One. Vice Chair Smith going twice. Vice Chair Smith going three times. That, colleagues, are we ready to vote? I don't have anybody in the queue. I don't have anybody on reserve time. One, once.
Call for the vote.
Going twice. Three times. On Amendment One, let's go to vote.
Honorable Almer Begay.
I vote Green.
Honorable Almer Begay votes Green. Honorable Key Allen Begay, Jr.
Delegate Key Allen votes Green. Thank you.
Honorable Key Allen Begay, Jr. votes Green. Honorable Paul Begay.
Paul Begay votes Green.
Honorable Paul Begay votes Green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
I vote Green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes Green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes Green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes Green. Honorable Amber Canespa-Crawdy. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes Green. Honorable Pernell Halona. Honorable Jamie Hino.
Jamie votes Green.
Honorable Jamie Hino votes Green. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate James votes Green. Thank you.
Honorable Vince James votes Green. Honorable Rick Nez.
Delegate Rick Nez votes Green.
Honorable Rick Nez votes Green. Honorable Carl Slater. Honorable Carl Slater votes Green. Via Tex.
Delegate Slater, Green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes Green. Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr.
Green.
Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr. votes Green. Honorable Wilson Stewart, Jr.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart, Jr. votes Green. Honorable Otto So.
I vote Green.
Honorable Otto So votes Green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Daniel So.
Daniel So votes Green.
Honorable Daniel So votes Green. Honorable Eugene So.
I vote Green, thank you.
Honorable Eugene So votes Green. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr.
Thomas Walker votes Green. Thank you.
Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. votes Green. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes Green. Honorable Edmund Yasi.
Green.
Honorable Edmund Yasi votes Green. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Honorable Green, Delegate Yellowhair.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes Green. Honorable Amber Canespa-Crawdy.
Delegate Amber Canespa-Crawdy votes Green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canespa-Crawdy votes Green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr.
Green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels, Jr. votes Green. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Halona votes Green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes Green. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So votes Green. Speaker with a vote of 23 yeas and zero nays. Speaker not voting.
That, 23 of favor, who are opposed. Speaker not voting, motion carries on Amendment One. Back to the main motion. Ready to vote? I don't have anybody on the board. One, once. Going twice.
Delegate Hino, I have reserve time.
Back to reserve time. 4:34, reserve time. Chairman Hino.
Good, see, I, last, Ashenanda, so, the, Speaker Damon, and Ashenanda, 24 Navajo Nation Council, based on, so, uh, together for abiding this amendment number one. And we passed it, and it's, uh, at least will be, uh, with extending money out. At the same time, once B I A gets everything in order, then, uh, B I E, and then we'll be getting that money put back. So, uh, it's good, I mean, supporting students is, um, I mean, a good initiative because they are going out and they get their education. Some are working hard. Uh, but it's just, uh, I've always had a beef with Navajo Nation scholars. I'm not a big fan of the scholarship office. Only reason I say that is because when I was going to school, I was denied all the years. I've been through there and I worked hard to get, maintain 4.0. But at the same time, I saw the students that weren't serious about their education. They would just get their scholarship, Navajo Nation Scholarship checks, and then we see them again, uh, don't see them again, or we sort of skip out and come back, uh, two or three, two weeks later. And, um, so I don't know what their criteria is. And so, the ladies in Crump was very, very nice that worked at the scholarship office and apologetic as to why. And I kept inquiring why, when you went, I mean, I worked hard for my grades and everything. And so, anyway, it's, um, like I said, some students worked hard to make extra money on the side, knowing what I had to do, work at night to earn my, uh, my education. But it was all well worth it, though. Uh, but they, they, I think they need to revisit their criteria to see how they, um, do a lot of scholarship money. Because, I mean, there are students that work hard. And there's some students that just go there and then once they see there's tell grant or the scholarship checks, and it's Navajo Nation, they just skip out and we don't see them again. But it seems like they were the ones that were getting funded more than the others that used to work hard. So, eh, eh, reserve, uh, wait the rest of my time. I support this legislation and I'm ready to vote. So, that's, good to Damon.
Hey, that, ready to vote then? Honorable Otto So.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ado, uh, the members of the Navajo Nation Council. Da, de, da, do, zeh. Out, eh, a, cha, controller, do, kri, in, da, ho, eh, ho, ho, chi. Ako, um, see, da, we also work through the scholarship initiatives on behalf of our Navajo children that are going to school out there. And with how the federal government is currently, um, uh, tell they get their, I guess, things in order, you know, for the future, ashko, eh, do, di. So we have to have a discussion on how can we look at ways to address issues like this if it comes into this scenario. Ako, eh, be, be, go, go, eh, eh, be, na, she. The other thing, too, is that, um, maybe the Land Acquisition Trust Fund, if we could revamp that whole trust fund, $167 million and just, anything related to land, basa, hadla, ke. Eh, go, eh, shimi, ke, face, so, ha, ni, or the chapters or the people would say, "Oh, don't spend our money." But that trust fund is only geared to land. Ke, ya, be, na, ni. If we can revamp the Land Acquisition Trust Fund and have that trust fund in place, that way, we could utilize that principle for future scholarships for our Navajo children who are going to school. Because we need to invest into those children, since. Ako, eh, a, cha, a, cha, uh, no, shi, si, ke, eh, ya, eh, ya, be, ki, a, de, i, ke, da, ash, ka, do, kri, Washington, de, bez, li, ya, can, de, be, ya, can, sail. At least we will have revenue and at least adequate amount to try to fund our Navajo children who are going to school out there. Because there's kids that are struggling. Universities will not allow a Navajo student to re-enroll for the next semester if he or she has a college debt of over $1,000. And that's where we have a lot of the drop rates happening. Ako, eh, be, go, go, tira, tira, a, hadit, eh, go, da, jo, be, cha, da, ni, ka, go. Eh, a, cha, land acquisition trust fund, iki, amen, so, de, ya, go, go. Oh, chen, ba, la, di, ta, a, a, cha, ne, ne, na, se, i, ke, da, ash, ka, do, le. Ben, na, da, shne, ni, bez, ha, hadit, a, da, chi, do, in, ke, ya, be, na, ni, ha, ha, ni, ho. Ah, da, da, la, eh, eh, cha, ni, cha, just like how the property in Washington, DC. Ado, 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 na, shun, ne, da. Ako, oba, sa, hallo, ba, sa, hallo. Ako, oh, a, cha, da, 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 di, a, eh, do, to, ba, sa, hallo, da. Eh, ho, a, a, cha, a, ki, al, bas, ne, do, de. Oh, ho, da, oba, ha, sp, do, ne, shonan, a, a, ob, ob, an, so, ke. Ado, na, a, ni, a, a, ta, ni, 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 so, han, eh, na, 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 na. Eh, eh, chen, ya, cha, da, ash, ka, ki, eh, i, ke, da, ash, ka, ki, eh, 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 hadit, a, da. I, I, eh, go, ba, ar, na, da, ni, li, is, and, oh, ba, da, di, ni, a, cha, oba, an, so, ke. With that, Mr. Speaker, I waive the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you for that recommendation, those options. Honorable Otto So.
They had, I thought it was, and it cost them again too. They called the internet, you don't know that's kind of, as you could have been, so some of them, they know that access of the internet, it could, it's expensive, their higher education. It, you know, cause right now they're like that. Thank you, Speaker.
Question of privilege, Speaker?
Thank you, Honorable Eugene So. That, Madam Chair, Charles Newton, question of privilege?
Thank you, Speaker. And again, Ms. Graham, thank you for the information. Honorable Eugene So for sponsoring the legislation. My question is, has this council received your report on how much money the Navajo Nation gives to students for scholarship purposes? I know that the amount varies based on, from my understanding, I don't know if it's true, but I think they said it's based on what year you are in school and then also which school you attend. But I think it would be good to get that information so that we can share that information. I also think it would be very important for this council to know with the funding that schools. And I ask you because I know that there is a big issue with keeping Navajo students in school and of course there's obstacles. But I do believe that when we first came into council, there was a report that was given to us on how much money is given to the students and then how many actually complete with their programs and receive their certificate or receive their diplomas. And then I think there was a breakdown, if I do remember correctly. But I do remember being provided this information. I believe it was like the first, when we were in orientation. So has this council been provided an updated report? And if we haven't, can we get that updated report showing the numbers? And then also all of the available funds that are offered to students for scholarship, because I know there's the Navajo Nation Scholarship Office. There's also chapters that do give scholarship money. Our enterprises give scholarship money as well. So I think it would be good to kind of have a good, I guess, collection of pots of money that are available to students so that we can share that with our constituents. Thank you, Speaker. That is my question of privilege.
Question of privilege is no, we have not received an update. Speaker's office has not. I can't reckon for, or speak for each one of the committees, standing committees. But Navo- committee has not received an update, Madam Chair. I don't know if each, I don't know if Health Education, Human Services is, but that request can be made to the Office of Navajo Nation Scholarship.
Yes, Speaker, can I please request that we make that, that we get that information so we have that information readily available?
Formerly notified, Ms. Graham. Hey, thank you. That, colleagues, if there's no other comments, questions? Going twice, who's staying speaker?
Thomas Walker.
Good evening, Vice Chair Walker.
Oh, good evening. Can I say something?
Yes, four's yours.
Yes, I'll be brief. Speaker, members of council, good evening. All the listeners on this call for this special session. The sponsor, Shuna, Shunanda, Chindito. I don't call it an agent, Shumayazha, Ms. Rose Graham. I'm going to vote green on this legislation. It's just too, too, too important not to. Although I have to say also, just listening to the discussion here on this particular legislation, it sounds like the BIA, you know, it's sort of like business as usual. Although Navajo Nation Scholarship Office, this is what happens frequently or every year. So that's a business as usual type of talk. As tribal leaders, you know, we need to make note of that. We need to advocate, continue advocating for our people, certainly. And when there's reasons given, excuses given, and say that's just the way it is, that's business as usual. While it could be better, processes could be streamlined, processes could be made to where there are no shortcomings. There's no, no, no gaps. When it comes to our children, I believe that we should stress how, you know, we need to always come through for them as far as policies, as far as funding and efforts concerned. I wanted to make that statement. Although legislation, emergency, emergency, that caught my attention. And, you know, when, when things are labeled as an emergency, it's, it's, has a dramatic feel to it. I will note this, you know, in my notes and, you know, next year we come to this point again, then we have something to say about it. We can communicate to the BIA, communicate to the Navajo Nation Scholarship Office and say, you know, are we, are we okay here? Thank you for this time, Mr. Speaker and members of council and listeners.
Speaker, this is Teller Goyele.
Speaker, this is Vice Chair Smith. Put me in queue.
Moving on down, thank you, Vice Chair Walker. We all here on the main motion.
Okay, Speaker, 24th Navajo Nation Council. Mr. Stevens, the prompt staff, either. It has to be done and activities. Because due to liability that happened. I was dropping my telephone, cut off, lost communication. The BIA person, the machine, four million dollars, all this. You don't have to pay back to UUFP. It's all observed my time, Speaker. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Yalver. That, moving on down, Honorable Vice Chair Smith.
Good evening, Honorable. Here's our Speaker for giving the time to speak on this legislation. Thank you for introducing this legislation as an emergency to help our students out there. Ms. Graham, for being there for many years for our students in behalf of their higher education. As Chief Anjulito has stated during 1868, we will not beat them at this level, but we'll beat them at a higher level. That's education. And I still stand with that kind of motto for the Navajo Nation. Education is the ladder to success and the key to having a better community and helping us to move forward. The reason why I say that is because I was a recipient of the Navajo Nation Scholarship. Put my application in, made sure my application was, all the i's, all the i's were dotted and all the t's were crossed and everything was in order. And I earned the Anjulito Scholarship, which helped me get my degree in the United, in University of New Mexico. I really appreciate the Scholarship Office. And I also want to say thanks to the leaders that established our own Scholarship Office. They see the future. And the 2.5 million for the youth to attend higher education. I'm really in support of that and I will vote green on this. And I just wanted to express the thanks on this.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Smith. That, colleagues, any other comments, questions? Are we ready to vote? One wants? Going twice? Or three times? Second reading?
Mr. Speaker, members of the 24th Navajo Nation Council, there's one amendment, amendment number one. Page 392427, delete the existing paragraph F and insert new paragraph F as follows. Overstrike F, due to the emergency nature of this legislation, the Office of Management and Budget has yet to provide the review required pursuant to 12 NNC 820M. The Office of Management and Budget can provide its review when the matter is heard before the Navajo Nation Council. End overstrike. New language underscore F. The Office of Management and Budget OMB has provided a memorandum as required by 12 NNC 820M, which is attached as exhibit E. And underscore two, add the memo from Dominic Beal dated December 28, 2020, as new exhibit E. Three, page three, lines 28, 29, and page four, lines one, two. Delete the existing paragraph G and insert new paragraph G as follows. Overstrike G, due to the emergency nature of this legislation, the Office of the Controller has yet to provide the information required pursuant to 12 NNC 820L. The Controller can provide this information when the matter is heard before the Navajo Nation Council. End overstrike. New language underscore G. The Office of the Controller has provided a memorandum as required by 12 NNC 820, section 820L, which is attached as exhibit F, as a result of the Controller's determination that the ONSFA scholarship causes are recurring. Waver language is included in section three of this line, of this resolution. And underscore four, add the memo from Perlin Kurt dated December 23, 2020, as new exhibit F. Five, on page four, line 22, add new paragraph as follows. Underscore C, the Office of the Navajo Nation Scholarship and Financial Aid, OMB Contracts and Grant Section. And Office of the Controller shall reimburse and replenish the unreserved undesignated fund balance in the amount of $2,500,000, when funds are provided by the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Six, renumber reletter succeeding paragraphs, sections, and exhibits accordingly if necessary. This amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in any other committee amendment. We shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Services would notice that the sponsor of legislation is hereby authorized to make necessary grammatical changes. Mr. Speaker?
Thank you. That, vote on legislation 316-20 with one amendment.
Honorable Almer Begay.
I vote green.
Honorable Almer Begay votes green. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr.
Delegate Calhoun votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Paul Begay.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi.
Delegate Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr.
Green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Pernell Holona.
Holona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Holona votes green. Honorable Jamie Henio.
Jamie votes green.
Honorable Jamie Henio votes green. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate Vince James votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Nez.
Delegate Rick Nez votes green.
Honorable Rick Nez votes green. Honorable Carl Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Raymond Smith Jr.
Green.
Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. votes green. Honorable Otto So. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel So.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
Oh, so, thank you.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr.
Thomas Walker votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. votes green. Honorable Edison Winika. Honorable Ed Menyazi.
Green.
Honorable Ed Menyazi votes green. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Yellowhair votes green.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes green. Honorable Otto So. Honorable Edison Winika. Speaker with a vote of 21 yays and zero nays, Speaker not voting.
Thank you. That, 21 in favor. Zero opposed, Speaker not voting. Motion carries on legislation 0316-20. That, colleagues. That legislation's final authority is with the President. That goes across the street. That, colleagues, moving on down, I have number B, legislation 0317-20. As of this evening, legislation 0317-20 was withdrawn, so there's no section, that's 317-20. With that, colleagues, the time now is 8:05 PM. Colleagues, there's a recommendation I'm gonna propose. Colleagues, maybe. Honorable Otto So.
I know you were calling for the votes. I wondered if you'd gotten voted, put your vote on, caught my vote as a green vote. I got to the line and tried to get back in. Thank you. Go back some minutes.
What was that? Was the vote? Hey, the vote was 21. Now the vote is 22 in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting on legislation 0316-20. For the record, that last vote came in from Honorable Otto So after the call was taken. Colleagues, time is 8:05 PM and we have two, two reports. Item C, update report on Navajo Nation Telecommunication Office from them, informationers on future development utilizing future funding. And then item number D, update from the Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise on operation and personnel matters. Colleagues, there's a suggestion from the Speaker's office or from myself that we continue that, those two reports discussions tomorrow afternoon. We can, we can start that at 1 o'clock. The reason why I'm requesting that, colleagues, is there is, as you can tell, there was a storm coming in. I just do not want the staff to be here that late this evening. That is a request, colleagues.
This is Delegate Charles Newton, Speaker. I'm good with that.
Most adjourned, Taylor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and send out, we'll send out a notice on that, an email and agenda. Meeting will start at 1 o'clock with those two meetings.
I'll vote green.
Speaker, would that be a motion to recess?
There would just be a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you.
Because there's no way to have a special session tomorrow to continue due to the fact that we would need a 24-hour notice. So we'd just be a regular, it would just be considered a meet, a regular update meeting. And we can get those two, we'll send out the information, colleagues. That's just a suggestion.
Motion adjourned by Vice Chair Smith.
Second, Delegate Nez.
Hey, motion adjourned by Vice Chair Smith, second by Chairman Rick Nez. Comments, questions? Wants, going twice?
Speaker, Delegate Begay.
Honorable Almer Begay.
Speaker, good evening. I'm questioning, is there, is there going to be a BNF meeting tomorrow regarding the permanent trust fund? And then there's another email that's sent out that there's going to be a permanent trust fund meeting. I'm not sure about the BNF.
I think there's a RDC meeting, there might be a BNF leadership meeting. That BNF leadership meeting might be changed, there's a request on that. And then those are the only two. Then the only other meeting that I know of is a Office of Government Development is having a meeting too as well. But the meeting tomorrow was from the, will, will continue, just as an update, will start at 1 o'clock, Honorable Almer Begay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. That, colleagues. Let's go to the board, vote on adjournment. At 8:10 PM.
Honorable Almer Begay.
I vote green.
Honorable Almer Begay votes green. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. votes green via text. Honorable Paul Begay.
Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi.
Delegate Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr.
Green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Pernell Holona.
Honorable Green.
Honorable Pernell Holona votes green. Honorable Jamie Henio.
Hey, I vote green.
Honorable Jamie Henio votes green. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Nez.
Delegate Nez votes green.
Honorable Rick Nez votes green. Honorable Carl Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Raymond Smith Jr.
Green.
Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. votes green. Honorable Otto So.
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel So.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
Oh, thank you.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr.
Thomas Walker votes green.
Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. votes green. Honorable Edison Winika. Honorable Ed Menyazi.
Green.
Honorable Ed Menyazi votes green. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Winika votes green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair.
Delegate Yellowhair votes green.
Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair votes green. Speaker with a vote of 23 yays, zero nays, Speaker not voting.
Thank you, 23 in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting. Motion carries. Thank you, colleagues. Good evening. Thank you very much. That.
Good night.
I'm going to, Eugene So here, thank you.